Okay, so we're in item one, looking for Mr. Yowelli Breen, but there is a motion to table because he's not here yet.
Okay.
There a second?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we'll table it and if he comes in, we'll bring it up again. So.
You want to do two and three together?
Yes, please.
Make a motion to take two and three together as a package?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So item two is a public hearing. So can I have a motion also to open the public hearing for items two and three?
Motion to open the public hearing for items two and three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So item two is a public hearing continued from March 8th, and it's ordered that the City Council amend Holyoke zoning ordinance to section 710 6.3A by deleting other uses listed in table 4.3 of principal uses and inserting the following language in its place: "Any pre-existing public or private school providing education in pre-kindergarten, kindergarten, or any grades 1 through 12, or other such legal forms sufficient to resolve any uncertainty interpretation of the existing ordinance as compliant with state law." Item three, public hearing continued from 3/8, "That the current buffer in the marijuana ordinance 200 feet from any other use be reviewed and revised to schools, residences, etc., to ensure opportunities for new marijuana businesses and to ensure continued development opportunities for established local business in accordance with our master plan, Connect, Construct, Create." So our public hearings are open, and I am first interested in hearing if there is any member of the public who wishes to speak on this issue. We've had a number of public hearings on it. I think we've taken in the factual information. So I just want to make sure we hear from anybody from the public. See any hands?
Dick Evans, how's your hands raised?
Evans?
Dick Evans?
A guy. Mr. Evans?
He's an attorney for one of the.
Do you wish?
Yes. Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, thank you very much, Madam Chair. My name is Dick Evans. I'm a lawyer in Northampton and am associated with ACMJ, one of the organizations that sought and obtained a special permit recently for cultivation operation. The ACMJ is, they've got their special permit, but they are very concerned and feel somewhat obliged to many others that are coming behind them that are being held up by the delay in the repair of the snafu that you folks inherited from the previous council. I'm the guy that wrote the memo that has gone around recently. I just want to say two things, Madam Chair, and one is that there are a lot of people, please know there are a lot of people counting on this committee and the council to make the necessary changes so they can get on with their business plans and their lives. There are people who want to invest in Holyoke, and they're not going to knock on the door of the city forever. It's really incumbent upon this committee to open that door, reopen that door. And the second thing is, please don't exploit this blunder to raise new policy issues. That's only going to take time. If the public health and the public safety requires further changes in the zoning ordinance, then debate them and make them. But let's first fix what's broken, and that is the blunder from last year's attempt to reform the zoning bylaw. There's really not a reason to perpetuate the mistake a minute longer, Madam Chair, and I urge very much the committee to close the public hearing after you've heard from everyone tonight, and take a vote and move this back to City Council. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard from the public relative to these two public hearings?
I would also, Chair Vacan, there are some people on, by phone, they can hit star nine if they want to raise their hand in case there were those.
Okay. Thank you for that reminder. Okay. So not seeing any other hands, not seeing any members of committee or council, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing for items two and three?
Two and three. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So these public hearings are closed. Now, that we can do as the committee wishes, I don't see planning coming in, but if somebody wants to offer a motion relative to these two orders, we could do it now if people feel like we want to just move on this.
Sure.
So if anybody would like to offer a motion relative to this?
I have a suggestion.
Counselordane.
Okay. So the first thing is that I think the objective initially, and how, the first thing I'll say is the vast majority, I think, of the council now has changed. We have totally new people here from, so I agree with Mr. Evans in one part, which is I think we should act, and I voted to close the public hearing. I don't necessarily say we, the new council, has to do everything identical that the last council did. It should be noted, they're the ones that made the mistake in the first place, so I don't want to necessarily speed into whatever decision they made. We're our own independent group of people. The people on this council can do whatever we wish. Having said that, I think a common sense objective here is one that has some buffers, has it for not all other uses, which I agree is ridiculous, and to be overly expansive, but one that protects, in the default for the state regulations, it says 500 feet for schools. I also think, and has been pretty consistent, and I believe it was in there at one time, was residences and churches. And I would like to see that buffers be in place in some manner, consistent with churches, residences, and schools. What I also want to be sensitive is to the fact of, is in the meantime, we've had some applicants come forward who currently have applications, and I don't want to necessarily do anything that harms them either. But, so my motion is going to be sensitive to the fact that we've had some people apply already, and I think they should have somewhat lesser restriction than people going down the road who will have new applications and are on notice of our rules, right? So we're not punishing anybody. So in that spirit, my current thinking is any application before April 1st, 2022, would be 200 feet from schools, residences, and churches. And applications after 4/1, 2022, would be 500 feet from schools, residences, and churches. And in support of the motion, I think these are three things that are well worthy of protection from being situated. Imagine now, if you're a school or a residence, and somebody comes in, now if you buy into that, that's fine. But if, what we're talking about here is new uses coming in, new applications, because I don't believe anybody would be, with the 200 feet, would be impacted, anybody that's applied thus far, that I'm aware of. But as far as anybody knew, you buy a house, and then somebody locates a marijuana facility right next door to you and has all this foot traffic, has all these deliveries, all of this stuff. You didn't buy into that, and your rights as a property owner should be as protected as them. And same with a church. You know, you put in a church, obviously, we have some of our longstanding churches in the area, or we have a new church that is, or an existing church that's there, and to have a marijuana facility open up right next door and create all of that versus also a school. If you have a pre-existing school, the school bought into that. This is what they had, and they deserve some buffer protection against one of these uses just appearing right next door to them. So I believe that the 200 buffer would protect those that have applied now, so they're not harmed. But in the future, that we would have greater protections for those in the future applications. So that, I think, is a fair situation. Beyond those uses, I'm open to listening to other uses, but I think those are the three that I think are the most vulnerable populations of people we want to protect: people's homes, people's religious institutions, and people's schools for kids. So if there's other uses, I'm open to those, but as it's currently written, all other uses, that's unfair. I think that's too expansive.
Madam Chair, so is that your motion?
That's my motion.
And?
Hopefully that's clear.
I'll second that motion for purposes of discussion. And while we are discussing, I also want to read into the record the recommendation from the planning board that we, I believe you have all received it, dated March 8th. I hope everyone already received it, but I want to read it into the record. Regarding zoning text change marijuana-related, section 710 6.5A. Locations regarding buffer. It's dated March 8th, 2022. Dear Counselordane, please be advised that the Holyoke Planning Board at their February 22nd meeting discussed the above referenced zoning text changes to the zoning ordinance. After considering testimony received at the public hearing and discussions, the board voted unanimously to recommend to the ordinance committee that the proposed revisions to section 710 65A of the zoning ordinance highlighted in red below be adopted. These changes will correct the inadvertent imposition of a 200-foot buffer for all ME uses from any other use as set forth in the Table of Principal Uses that was introduced in the last set of revisions to Holyoke's cannabis zoning ordinance. So they go on to give us some discussion that it is clear from the legislative history that it was not the council's intent to impose such a buffer when it adopted these revisions. Its imposition has had a serious impact on several cannabis businesses that were at various stages of permitting when the change was made, and unless the error is corrected, it will cause harm both to these specific businesses and to Holyoke's reputation as reliable partner to the growing industry. We're aware that legitimate concerns have been raised about the odors associated with MMEs, and we agree that these concerns must be explored and addressed. We believe, however, that the accidental freeze on further cannabis development created by this drafting error fails to address the actual problem while creating uncertainty and risk for affected businesses. We therefore recommend that the ordinance committee and the City Council make this technical correction immediately. We further recommend that appropriate proceedings to explore and address the odor issue begin as soon as possible and look forward to being of assistance in those proceedings. Regarding Chair Vacan's order of 12218, "That the current buffer in the marijuana ordinance 200 feet from any other use be reviewed and revised to schools, residences, etc., to ensure opportunities for new marijuana businesses and to ensure continued development opportunities for established local businesses in accordance with our master plan, Connect, Construct, Create." We expect to forward a recommendation after public hearings on these issues have closed and when all the necessary information has been gathered to assess these complex issues. This recommendation deletes the accidentally adopted language that prohibited MMEs from locating within 200 feet of any other uses set forth in Table of Principal Uses. Operational requirements. Three, location. An ME shall not be located in buildings that contain any residential units, including transient housing such as hotels, motels, and dormitories. B, any RMRE shall not be located within 500 feet of any pre-existing public or private schools providing education in pre-kindergarten, kindergarten, or any grades 1 through 12. Revised language. Any other ME shall not be located within 200 feet of any pre-existing public or private school providing education to, in pre-kindergarten, kindergarten, or any grades 1 through 12. And then it goes on to say, "For purposes of this section, measurements between ME and schools shall be done in a straight line from the geometric center of the ME public entrance to the geometric center of the nearest school entrance." New language. Unless there is an impassable barrier within those 500 or 200 feet, in which case it shall be measured by the shortest publicly accessible path measured along the center of the shortest publicly accessible pedestrian travel path from the geometric center of the ME entrance to the geometric center of the nearest school entrance. So I would like to note two things after reading this into the record. One, both public hearings that we opened tonight were advertised together, one and the other. So if one of the public hearings is closed, then both are closed. That does not stop us from accepting the recommendation of the planning board, but it will not allow for the planning board to consider, to continue to consider the other order because they were joined in the public hearing. So I just want to note that. I also would like to note that, to date, there has been no special permit denied for a marijuana business, given the convoluted path that we've been on. So now that we have everything officially into the record, we have the motion before us made by Counselordane that keeps the 200-foot buffer through the end of March and suggests to include residential and churches along with the school language that's been recommended by the planning board.
That's right.
Is there anybody who wishes to?
Tessa.
Madam Chair? Counselor Murphy Rambeletti?
I can wait for Counselor Givner to go if that's, she's on the committee, so I can go after her.
Counselor Givner?
Yeah, I just, as part of the language, I noticed we have residents as a whole, and since it was originally for 200-foot school buffer, I like the language of the hotels, motels, dormitories for transient, but I wonder if we couldn't, I'm not sure that all residential should be included as those aren't really residential areas primarily. So I'd like to change the language to take out the primary residential areas.
I don't understand. They don't have any buffer. Just, there's no buffer, as I'm aware, Madam Chair, currently.
Counselordane?
Yeah. I don't, in the current proposal, as I understood it, there was no buffer at all for residential, except that it couldn't be residential on the location of the place where they're doing marijuana. So there's currently no buffer for any residential of any form, but what I, I don't think I would want to necessarily distinguish between a single-family home, a two-family home, or a rental or a dormitory. It seems that it would be all the same. Right now, it's zero. So like, no buffer. And that, to me, seems a bit much.
Oh, I thought it said that there's a, that the buffer would include residential units, even primary residential units, and I didn't think there were a whole lot in those areas, so I was questioning that.
Are you all set, Counselor Givner?
Um, yes.
Counselor Murphy Rambeletti?
Yeah, hi, everyone. Thank you. Well, I can appreciate Counselordane's comments about residential areas. I, for the purposes of this evening, the reason why I filed the order that would change the Scrivener's error and keep everything else the same is so that we can move forward on this specific topic. I personally believe that if we want to, you know, limit residential or have a buffer for residential units, that's actually, you know, in and of itself creating a more restrictive buffer than state law. And I worry that that would be, you know, grounds for someone to challenge us. And so I also just want to emphasize that, you know, if, I think maybe I would agree more with Counselordane if the current zoning ordinances didn't restrict marijuana uses to the IG zone. I think creating a buffer from schools, churches, and residential establishments limits an already very limited space in our downtown. So personally, that's why I'm actually in favor of exploring different zones within the city to allow for these uses. But, you know, the reason why I filed this order is because there was nothing in the legislative history of the draft language of the public hearing before the planning board and statements by other counselors that suggested that the council intended for this to be more restrictive. And so this order that I filed simply asks us to make clear to the public that the existing ordinance complies with clearly stated intent of the council, and it does not unlawfully contradict or preempt state law. So those are just my thoughts on this. And I just urge folks to address the language that is already adopted but just needs that edit for the 200-foot buffer zone. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will speak to the order that I have filed in regards to this. Since the inception of the marijuana ordinance, we had started out with a 500-foot buffer, which is the recommended buffer that is put forth by the Marijuana Cannabis Commission. It does allow for it to be smaller, but the 500 is recommended, and we see many communities that have much greater buffers than that. I would also note that Holyoke has given the most special permits for marijuana in the state. So it has not been limited, and there has not really been a limiting factor that has put a chilling effect on this business in Holyoke. To the contrary, we are number one in the state in that regard. So I just want to clarify those things. So right now, we have a motion before us that takes into consideration every current application that we have before us, which is on our agenda tonight for later in this particular meeting. And we've heard input. And Counselordane?
Yeah, I just, a couple of points. The first thing we need to do is not compound a mistake that we made, not we, but the prior council made in that they just quickly passed something and they did it piecemeal. So that instead of actually reading what they were doing, they just wrote, because the planning board went in, as I understand, and called it zero feet from all uses, and somebody said, oh, that's crazy, because that basically means no buffer. So then the council just went in and said, okay, we'll change the zero to a 200, and now it's 200 from all uses, which is equally absurd, because now it's buffer to everything. So what I think we should do is just get it right. Like, we're on the topic of buffers. Let's fix it so that it's right. And now it raises the question of what do we really want to do? And I don't think there's any disagreement on the schools. I think the state sets the default at 500. But in fairness, like I was trying to say, a compromise was you don't want to punish these applicants that have already come forward now and make it more restrictive, so like, they're out of the box if we change this. So that's why I said keeping that to 200 makes sense. But the issue of residences and churches, to me, is a real issue if you're in a situation where the IG zone bumps up to a home or a church. And I'm not aware of this being a problem, that I'm aware of anyways, but in the event that it would, then they would be protected. And the IG zone is in and of itself going to protect, hopefully, against these kind of buffer issues. It helps insulate it somewhat. But the reality is, is do we want to protect residences or not? Do we want to protect churches from having these high-intensity uses right next door? And for the same reason we want to protect schools, we want to protect residences and churches as opposed to, we're not trying to protect convenience stores, gas stations, any commercial use, any other industrial use. You know, those things don't need those kind of protections, but if you buy into a neighborhood and you have a house, and then all of a sudden, somebody were to pop up this type of a use, a high-intensity use, with a lot of traffic or a lot of deliveries and these type of things, I'm not even touching on the odor issue. There's that, too, but I'm not even getting into that piece of it. You want to know that my City Council, who I elected, protected me against that potentially, right? I bought this house. I'm here. My investment is as important as whatever you're trying to bring into the city. And they deserve our protection, and that's why we have buffer zones from these high-intensity uses against our most vulnerable populations. And that's why I supported buffer zones on a lot of these things. And as a general rule, the three categories that we've protected are children, people's homes, and churches. And that's, I think, is very consistent, without harming a past applicant, a current applicant, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McGivern?
Thank you, Chair Vacan, and thank you, everybody. I just, some thoughts and some concerns. We know the history of our city is 125 years old, an industrial-built city for the purpose of manufacturing. And when the city was built, residents, schools, churches, retail stores were all neighborhood and designed so that people could walk to work in an industrial area. IG is throughout the city. However, when we limited the, especially marijuana manufacturing, to the IG zone, we, a bulk of that is in the industrial rings off the canals. Now, this proposed amendment would not affect the third ring, the furthest one out towards the river, but it would have a dramatic effect on the second and first level canals. You know, people have residents next to manufacturing, and that has been the history of the city, as I stated, the design of this city. You know, to make this more restrictive at this stage of the game is not fair to people who are looking at Holyoke, to businesses that want to come in to offer jobs. We've already seen the pluses in property tax. We've seen the pluses in impact fees, and we've seen the pluses, most important, in new jobs in the city of Holyoke. We have not heard a lot of concerns in the neighborhoods. You know, we've been able to allow this manufacturing of marijuana, it's another manufacturer, exists in the zones that were created for manufacturing. Now, if we start talking about residents that close and schools that close, it's something that, you know, the design that took place 100 years ago didn't even envision, come close to visioning, what life would be like today. And it's just, to me, I'm just concerned that we're going to, you know, force the end of a new business coming into the city of Holyoke for the wrong reasons. You know, the prior City Council didn't make a mistake, you know, other than letting a Scrivener error go by because we were too lax in allowing legal forms, you know, being given to us at the last minute, and we missed it. But it's the prior, prior City Council that created the buffer zone in the 200 feet, I thought was a compromise to some of the 500 and 600 feet, 1,000 feet that were being proposed a while back in the beginning. Again, I'm concerned, look at the industrial zones where they are. They exist and coexist in residential neighborhoods, and every residential neighborhood, especially our older residential neighborhoods, by design have churches and schools built close by. Let's not throw the baby out with the bathwater.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Maldonado-Villas?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I just want to say sort of the same things. I mean, I know the public hearing itself for the last two months has been around this specific language, which is any pre-existing public or private school providing education. I feel like tonight's the first night that I heard residents and churches as well, so I think.
Number three.
Not churches.
No, not churches.
No, and that's what I'm saying. I feel like the conversation has been around schools for the last two months, so like, if we were to make this change today, that's just pretty much doing the same mistake that we did that got us to the Scrivener's error. So I'm ready to pass this today or refer this to the full committee with the language that Murphy Rambeletti and Anderson was put in, because a lot of them, McGivern and Murphy Rambeletti, said the IG is already restrictive enough. And I think the process of a public hearing, if there's an establishment next to a church or a residence, and those individuals feel like they don't want those establishments there, then they can come in and voice those concerns. But I think this covers it for now, and I think the conversation we've been having since we started is that this whole ordinance needs to be re-looked at and really, I mean, there's a reason why we want a cannabis liaison and all that to help with this language. And really, I mean, there's a reason why we want a cannabis liaison, all that, to help with this language. I think this is just a one step that we need to take today to make sure that we can get to this next step. I think adding more restrictions would not benefit us at all.
Well, thank you for that. But I would just like to note that prior council, before the last council, developed the original language. And I think that the council is capable of looking at and addressing, but we do have to be aware that we have to deal with the realities as they develop. And usually with any new business, there are unintended consequences of the business as well. And so I think that's what we are addressing at this point. And there's fair arguments to be had on both sides. Right now, we have a motion made that's before us that we're debating. Now, you can offer an amendment to that motion, or we can vote on that motion.
If you... The alternative proposal, more, too.
Well, this is...
Is it just 200 from a school? That's it?
Yes.
Nothing residents, nothing church, just 200 from a school?
Yes.
So Counsel Rivera.
So, thank you, Madam Chair. I think for me, after listening to everybody, because I'm with the 200 residents from the school, I mean, 200 yards from the school, residents and the church thing. But at the same time, looking at Main Street, looking at Ray Street, there's kind of churches peppered in the IG district anyways. And I think in the future, there'll be more that'll come up from time to time. So that'll tighten the IG district already as it is. It's a valid argument to say that most of them are kind of like stuck in one part of the city, right? And if it was a little more spread out, it'd be, I'd be more inclined to actually vote about the residents and the churches, because now we're actually going to a whole, like, we're expanding the map, right? But that's not kind of the case right now, because it's not. For me, it's like, I kind of want to just keep it as simple as we can for now, because we can always change it as we go on, right? But for now, I think the simplest one would be to add some form of an amendment that kind of goes back to what item number two was at. I'm in agreement, kind of, I kind of want to vote for your motion, but that's the main thing that, for me, is kind of holding me back. Where it's like, we're all in one space, and before you know it, within the next two years, everything's going to be super tight. And then we're going to come back again, and either someone's going to either sue us, because they feel like it's not being fair, or we're going to have to revamp everything all over again. And I feel like if we take baby steps, just by allowing it open, and then later on, we can go ahead and add another buffer if we need to, if we feel the need to or whatnot, just like, starting from a smaller spot, then going to that level. Because obviously, we've been in mucky waters for the last six or seven months or so.
Right. And I just want to clarify, and the reason that I filed the order that I filed is because we've had a longstanding businessperson come in who is within the buffer, who is having issues relative to the industry. And so part of our job is also to balance the new businesses and support our existing people who have invested for a number of years in significant amounts of money and are also significant taxpayers in the community. But I think there has been a good airing of all the points and all the positions and all of the issues. So if somebody wants to offer an amended motion, or we'll take a vote on the motion on the table.
I'd like to amend my motion. I see where they're coming from, and I appreciate the sensitivity around it. Obviously, this becomes a bigger issue. I agree with the proponents of this thinking that if we have more zones, this is going to create more havoc around town to bump up to other people's vested interest, because our residents and churches, and they're just as important as any of these facilities too. Because, you know, they've been here. And, you know, you might say, "Well, I don't give you a big user fee, but my, you know, I've been living here for 25, 30 years or whatever." You know, I'm important too, you know? That becomes baby out with the bathwater. But anyways, I think I'm willing to compromise on the church and reduce it to residences and just schools. I think for the same reason you would have concerns about school you would have for a residence, it seems to me. But keep it instead of the 500, just 200. My fear about that, well, let's get back to this. This is a long, difficult process, you know, to my colleagues. And to get to this stage could be two years from now. That's my concern about this, to say, "Well, I'll get back to you," you know, or "Fix it if it becomes a problem." The problem is, the horse will already be out of the barn, because you can't really change it after people apply. You can only change it for what's right now. So I would, I'm going to modify my motion to be 200 school, 200 residents only.
With the same date.
Effective now, because to my knowledge, with no April 1st or whatever, it would just be, because I was going to make it more strict in April, but that won't be needed. I won't, I'll eliminate the whole 500, because to my knowledge, this doesn't apply to anybody currently applying.
So I'll second that amended motion. So the motion on the table right now is to amend the language to have a 200-foot buffer between schools and residences. And the school language as recommended from the planning board.
Counselor Givner wanted to...
Counselor Givner?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Are we sure that that doesn't apply to anyone who's currently in the application process?
Well, we will be having their hearing tonight. So if there is any concern in that regard... The only communication that I had from somebody was a concern about the 200 feet with the school. But in fairness, they were only looking at that.
And I would be happy to make it effective for one, if that means we don't apply it to anybody currently in the hopper.
Right. Well, that's why I...
Yeah, okay, okay. Then I'll further, to alleviate any possible concern, make it effective April 1st for any applications after April 1st.
Also to clarify, it would be 200 feet from schools instead of 500, and that's it? Or 200 from schools and residences?
200 from schools and residences, but no 500 from anything, as it stands right now. As a motion, right now. It's a motion.
I mean, my only problem with the residences is that we're in a really populated city. So even in the IG district, there's a lot of houses within 200 feet of everything. So I just worry about that a bit.
Well, if they're already in, that's not a problem, right? It's only for new.
So Counsel, are you all set, Counsel Givner? Counsel McGivern?
Thank you, Chair Bacon. If I remember correctly, we created an IG zone on the corner of North Bridge Street in Lyman Street, I think it is, the old Franco Club, when the entire neighborhood of residents asked us to do that, because they were in favor of a new business. And I think, you know, to apply this to residents outright is a mistake because of the design of this city. Our industry has created where people live for a purpose. Many people want to walk to work. Many people, you know, believed, and I'm not just talking 100 years ago, but even now, people want to do it. Our industrial park in Springdale, you know, is an industrial park that is separated but close to a residential neighborhood itself. And we have pre-existing schools, and we have new schools popping up, and we have churches, as Counsel Rivera said, popping up in a lot of places. The proposals here is making this way too strict. We have good laws on the state level. We have a history of this industry coming into the city with very few problems. We've heard from the Board of Health, we've heard from residents, we've heard from a lot of people, that this has been mostly a positive and a plus for the city in terms of jobs, taxes, and filling vacant buildings. We created a downtown zone that allows residential living in manufacturing buildings. We did that with purpose, because people want to live in an industrial city, near industry, near downtown, near retail. It's not only a way of life 100 years ago, it's a way of life now, as we've heard from so many people. Let's not make this stricter than it was. If anything, let's go back to where we were trying to make it inviting. And it's not just for those who are in the hopper, but other businesses that want to come in. The more jobs, the more taxes we can create, the healthier this city will be.
Thank you. I saw Attorney Bissonette's hand up earlier. Attorney Bissonette?
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chairman. One point I wanted to make with regard to adding residences into the 500-foot zone, you're adding essentially the space of a football field between the 200 and the 500 to many of these mill properties, which are...
Just to clarify, we're only talking about 200 at this point, not the 500 anymore. Just to clarify.
And the addition of the residences to the 200 zone
Yes.
from what would now be the 500-foot zone would limit a lot of the old mills that are being looked at for rehab, similar to the wind development properties on Appleton. Those things are virtually tight to their lot lines. Adding a football field to those dimensions may actually push them into adjoining lots where there may be a cultivator or manufacturer looking to develop that. Just want to point that out, to echo what everyone else says. The good planning by your ancestors really made downtown very tight. And that's how it was designed. And that really are the circumstances that you're working with right now. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, point of order.
Counsel Jordane.
Yeah, again, with all due respect to Mike Bissonette, and I know he's new, but legal advisors are here to give legal advice, not to give policy advice. What would be nice, what could be nice, what we should do, you know, that's for counselors to debate, not for department heads or assistants to department heads to come in here and weigh in on the substance of issues. Otherwise, I don't know, let's call the DPW superintendent and see what she thinks. Let's call the fire chief up and get his opinion, too. I mean, at some point, you know, people get elected to office and weigh in on their opinions. You know, if there's a legal issue that we're not aware of, by all means, weigh in. But, well, what we could do, should do, you know, football fields, all of that. I mean, I don't think that's really the purview of the Law Department, to be weighing in on policy issues.
Okay. So right now, the motion that we have before us is, as of April 1st, there would be a 200-foot buffer between the schools, including the language that was recommended from the planning board, and residential. So that's the motion before us, and we can...
Madam Chair, I think the planning board director's trying to weigh in.
Excuse me?
Mr. Vega.
Oh, okay. Mr. Vega?
Hello, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the committee. So not to talk about policy, but just, I was just looking for confirmation. And I appreciate Kevin Jordane, Counsel Jordane's comments about, you know, making sure people who are in the hopper or in the pipeline, as we say, to keep the cannabis innuendos going, not being affected. I think, and I look to be corrected, I don't know if the Law Department, or you would know yourselves, or if the clerk is there, but when someone comes in to pull their special permit, that's the ordinance that they're under. So if no one's pulled their special permit till next month, then they'll be under this new ordinance. I don't think changing this ordinance tonight is going to, I don't think it's going to impact anyone currently in the hopper or in the pipeline. I could be mistaken, but I just throw that out there. I'm not sure when that timeline starts, if it's when the city clerk accepts it or when it comes to you, so just want to make sure that gets clarified as you go forward.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, not seeing any other... Counsel Rivera?
I think for me, if we could actually find out whether or not this would be putting someone at risk with regards to the buffer, right? Because when I was referring to one being in residential is the Lee Flux one that I see in the flats on the corner of North Bridge and Lyman. I'm sure they probably got a permit, but I'm not sure they have a permit to open yet, because they still have not opened yet. So they've been around, I've seen them doing work and doing all this stuff for quite some time. The only thing is that they haven't been up and running yet, so...
Right, so...
I don't know when they open, so for me, it's trying to, I guess I go back to the baby step thing, and then from there, I can grow. I'm hearing you, Counsel Jordane, but like, just, I want to err on the side of caution, just because I need to know more. If not, then...
And the only point of clarification I would make is that any special permit that was already issued is issued. So if we change an ordinance, we're not going to go back in time. As a matter of fact, the city council approved, as we all know, two of the applications for a special permit under the current ordinance, which says none. So, you know, the current law, our current ordinance that you have in front of you, says nobody can basically do anything. Because there's a 200-foot buffer between everything and everything else, right? And the city council approved those two special permits also. So I'm just putting it on the record what actually has already happened, in fact. But having said all that, the motion is before us. Somebody can offer an amendment to that motion, or we can vote on the motion.
Me, I guess my amendment would be to remove residents and just go with the original language.
Okay. So that's an amendment?
Well, with just 200 feet from any pre-existing public or private schools.
With the one drive language.
Yes, yes. And I mean, when I think residences, just think even Main Street, like, old buildings, like firehouses that are now turned into residences, and like, you know, second floors on top of like churches, like buildings that are also residences, it's really hard. You know, I've visited people down in like South Holyoke and the flats, where I'm like, wait, this is an apartment, this is a residence. So it's really, passing that today with this language, with where it's restricted to, would not be fair for these businesses coming in. That's why I go back to like, we're just going to make sure, particularly our Ward 1, Ward 2 counselors, like if there's any business that comes in, mobilize your constituents. If they really feel strongly about a business not being at their corner, they have every right to come in, and maybe that would be the first one that we don't pass here because of what they're saying. But yeah, I think as is written with the suggestion with the 200 feet with the schools, I think should suffice for now.
And that is a fair point, because under a special permit, if their quality of life issue is raised, certainly those have standing in that public hearing. So is there a second to this amendment?
A second amendment.
Okay. All right, so we will vote on the amendment first, since it's the most recent thing before us. So all in favor of the amendment to have the buffer be 200 feet between, and let me read it exactly. "Any other ME shall not be located within 200 feet of any pre-existing public or private school providing education in pre-kindergarten, kindergarten, or any grades 1 through 12." And also, the other new language was what I already read into the records. So on your amendment, you might want to include the new language that refers to, unless there is an impassable barrier within those 500, 200 feet, in which case it shall be measured by the shortest publicly accessible path measured along the center of the shortest publicly accessible pedestrian travel path from the geometric center of the ME entrance to the geometric center of the nearest school entrance. So I'll add that to your amendment.
So just read it. Add that.
There you go.
I'll do it. All right, read it. "Unless there is an impassable barrier within those 200 feet, which, as you guys will be measured by the shortest publicly accessible path measured along the center of the shortest publicly accessible pedestrian travel path from the geometric center of the ME entrance..." to the geometric center of the nearest school entrance."
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. So, the amendment is now 200 feet between schools with the modified language to the impassable measurement. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No. So it passes 3 to 2, and we'll go to city council, as recommended. Thank you all. Welcome to the planning board. So...
So, don't we have to take item number four off the table?
I would entertain, yep, and to open the public hearing?
Yes, I'll make a motion, take item number four off the table and open the public hearing.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
So, item four is a joint hearing with the planning board, continued from 3/8. Ordered that the city council amend Holyoke zoning ordinances to correct the site plan review process in Section 7.10.6.5B. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So our public hearing's open.
Counselor, which, which one are we doing?
Item four is the one relative to site plan review process of the planning department.
Okay, all right, that's 71065.
Yes.
Okay. I entertain a motion, open up the public hearing of the planning board, to take up a zone text change, Section 71065, marijuana establishment regarding the site plan review process.
So move.
So move. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay. Just for a clarification, the people of the city council, we've, some new guidelines came out from the state relative to these hybrid meetings today. One of the recommendations was the fact that all of our votes be done via roll call, so we've been doing a roll call all evening with the planning board. The second recommendation was that anyone who's not attending in person, hears here remotely, we just identify who that individual is. So, from our planning board, this evening remotely, we have Mimi Panich and Roseanne Lopez. And then Chair, if you'll call the roll and vote to open the public hearing, please.
Yep, Rosanna?
Yes.
Gernander?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Mimi?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Okay, so, for our part, I think we've just really been waiting to see which corrections to that particular language in the marijuana ordinance the planning department would like to have to remove the major site plan review requirement, which I believe was unintentional.
Would do anything intentional?
It was all part of that.
That was all, that was part of that.
And so, we've just been basically waiting to see what would cure the problem for planning.
I think, Jeff, you, are you over there? Or, I know Mimi worked a lot on this, too, but I think what we sent over to you were some of the, the key points that we do need to get accomplished in this sort of, any sort of a review.
So, actually, if I may, I
Go ahead.
Okay, I think we're looking at most directly, the current 5B, I think we would all agree, needs to come out if, and I assume that this is the case, the city council wants to be the sole issuer of a special permit for these projects. The other concerns are whether, once we do that, any adjustments need to be made in the materials that are submitted to the city council. Because some of them, for instance, a traffic study, where it's appropriate, well, I think it is still worth having, but we may want to, or the city council may want to condition how much of a review is necessary. You know, basically, where we were before was, we had all agreed, I think, that the city council was going to take over 100% of the responsibility for these special permits, except in the instances where a major site plan review would be triggered anyway. The problem then became one of enforcement and the fact that, and this is a more global problem, I realize that this is outside the precise ambit of this order. But the city council has been issuing special permits for not only marijuana facilities, but many other things, without doing a, you know, the kind of document that both our ordinance and state law appear to call for, which include a set of findings as required by our ordinances, that address a great many of the things that the permit granting authority is supposed to consider. And those are set forth in our ordinance now, both, you know, specific ones for a marijuana facility, and general ones for any special permit that any of the permit granting authorities grant. And, you know, our thought had been that we should simply take out that 5B section that refers to site plan review by the planning board from Section 7, and adjust what you require for your site plan at, or for your marijuana facility review. And then, whether by ordinance or by city council or ordinance committee rules, you should probably adopt a format that gives you a checklist for issuing a comprehensive special permit, that could then build in stages, enforcement, what the conditions were. You know, I realize that suggesting this is suggesting a great deal more by way of paperwork than the city council has been doing, but our feeling has been that this really is what the, or what any special permit granting authority should have been doing all along. And this is as good a place to start as any, because the issue is already before you. So that's the overview, and we don't know whether this is something that you all are willing to consider. We don't know whether, if so, you want to address what you want to see, or have us address what we think you should see. And I see that Counselor Murphy Ramboletti has her hand up, so I should probably stop right there.
Great. So, I thank you for the overview, but I would point out two things. The purpose of this public hearing is simply, as was pointed out in the last public hearing, to correct 5B, where it talks about Section 10 of our zoning ordinance, and calls for a major site plan review, which is obviously incorrect, because under that language, the planning board either approves or disapproves of the plan. So, that is the part that needs to be corrected. The special permit language in our ordinances exists, we have no... This is the marijuana ordinance.
Of the marijuana ordinance.
Yes, it's part of your packet. Excuse me for one second. So, truly, under this public hearing, the only thing that we can do is clean up what the role of the planning board will be. Now, my recollection of all the prior hearings last year, and I think I was the only one there, other than you and a couple other people, was that the planning department and the planning board would continue in the same exact role that it had been, and that we were continuing to have the back and forth. As part of the application process, the clerk sends the application to planning, DPW, various other departments. And we have specific language in the marijuana ordinance, not our special permit language, but within the marijuana ordinance itself, that says what particular areas will be reviewed in terms of the planning review. And so, we're keeping the special permit granting authority, but we never, to my knowing or perception, were doing anything to minimize the input and the review of the planning department. And in every special permit that we have issued, there was typically a back and forth between an initial and a follow-up, and sometimes two or three follow-ups. With the more experienced manufacturers, sometimes they came in and they were very thorough, and it went very quickly and easily, without a lot of back and forth. But as recently as January, that typical procedure of, the application comes in, the review is done, and the feedback goes back and forth, happened in that special permit that we gave in January. So, what I don't know, from the perspective of the planning board and staff, is if we eliminate 5B, is that going to eliminate the procedures that you have been doing? Because that is not the intent of any of the hearings or discussion or language that I've been a part of. So, would that happen if we eliminate 5B?
Well, they would fall back to the planning board to do 5B, because it's, you know, it's due to law, Chapter 48, we gotta follow that, as Ms. Panich pointed out, so you can't just throw it out and eliminate it, until we have to have it done by the planning board. And, you know, the site plan reviews are, they could be multiple meetings, we'll start a review, we'll ask for information, something like a traffic study could take, you know, could take a month or two before we get that data in and analyze it, et cetera. So, these are very thorough, very in-depth, it takes a lot of time to get them done, and clearly, that's not any step you want ever, you know, mitigate at all.
Right. So, for example, if we're looking at the marijuana ordinance, where it talks about marijuana establishment site plan application requirements, and above that, it refers to H, the traffic impact statement, which they have been historically submitting to planning.
Well, yes and no. Sometimes we have to tell them we require that, and there have been times, by the way, we've had a peer review.
Yeah.
You know, of those two. So this
Yeah.
I mean, we're, you know, we're, we have litigation right now, and not with marijuana, but there's a peer review done, et cetera, you know? So it's not unusual for us to ask for traffic studies.
Yeah. So, all, all I'm trying to say is that all of the things that are in the current marijuana ordinance, we want to make sure continue. So, I'm, as a person who's been here through all of this, I just want to be sure, under B, in error, was a major site plan review. My understanding was, we wanted the planning department to continue to review, but not at the high level of the major site plan review.
Well, I guess it would depend upon how comprehensive that project is. It may trigger a major site plan review, we don't know.
For reasons separate from what we're doing.
Mm-hmm.
Right. But, so, all I'm trying to say is, we're happy to fix this, as long as we're not throwing the baby out with the bathwater if we eliminate B.
Well, Mimi, you had something you wanted to...
Yeah. And that is the exact point that we're trying to get at with this. You know, the reason that we are not giving you a finished draft saying, here is, you know, everything you want in Section 7 and nothing you don't want, is that there was confusion early on. There was a point at which it appeared that what was desired was for planning to have some enforcement authority, and to really look at a lot of these applications hard. And at that point, 5B got included in Section 7, which basically applied major site plan review standards to just about everything, as a separate procedure. It then became clear that this only confused applicants and made things more difficult, at which point, we wanted to take it out again, amend this so that the major goals of the city council were accomplished. The things that you wanted looked at, that were not being examined in as much depth as might be desired, were not as enforceable as they should be. You know, all of that should be corrected. And if we don't want major site plan review, it shouldn't be in the marijuana ordinance, it will be triggered by other things occasionally, as Chairman Kelly points out. But, again, before we can give you a final version of this, I think we need to have some guidance from you all about all of the things that you want to have control over, and that you feel should be included in your special permit review. But, no, the idea is not for us to stop providing you with those review letters at all. It's to make sure that the review letters contain what you need, and to give you a sort of tool for making sure that they're all addressed in the end when you render a decision.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Does that help at all?
Yes, yes. Because where it comes out of the marijuana ordinance and goes into special permit language, you know, those sit side by side, rather than being part of one.
Yep.
And so, we have to follow the special permit ordinance as a committee.
Yeah.
Certainly. And so, it's, it's fine to have it as a reminder of what that language is, but as far as what we have done in the past practice of the applicant reviews, I'm hoping would stay the same, and I'm just looking to end up with language that would keep it as essentially it had been. That's all I'm trying to say.
So basically, you're, you're, you're suggesting that we just pull 5B out of, right?
Right. I mean, I, my
And everything else on here, everything that's on here, you're comfortable with. What's the
But we're not, but we're not changing, the things that you have put in the document that you've submitted in the public hearing, don't change the marijuana ordinance.
That's what I'm saying, the ordinance is right here.
Right.
Right. So all you're, all you're suggesting is, we pull out of the marijuana ordinance, Section 5B.
Well, except that, I would, I would want to take out major site plan review, but I don't want to take it out in a way that eliminates, the planning board will review. I mean, I want to keep that the planning board will review the application under the procedures set forth, cross off site plan review, but set forth in this ordinance and state law? I mean, whatever references are the appropriate reference, but not major site plan review. And, and you folks know more what those proper references would be.
Right, because as we said earlier, not everyone's gonna have to go through a major site plan review, anyway. Depends upon the size of the project, scope of it, yeah.
So if we left in, and we would need legal to put this in a proper form,
Right, yes.
But if we did something like, upon receipt of a complete application, the planning board will review the application under the procedures set forth in this ordinance and other applicable state law?
Well, again, I think we could probably defer to law department to help us with the wording of it.
But I mean, would that be the gist of it?
Yeah.
Okay, so...
Yeah, we have to follow, obviously, yeah, Chapter 48, which is
Right, so we will leave that reference in. Okay.
Someone, someone has their hand up on the Zoom?
Oh, yeah.
Um, okay.
I do.
Jeff Burkhardt?
Yeah, so just, just a brief follow-up, if I may. So, previous to the 5B being added, planning staff reviewed under 5A for special permit, but still encompassing everything that was there. When 5B got added, that's when we formally took it back to the planning board for their review. So presumably, as it stands, if 5B were to be eliminated or removed, planning staff would then go and still do the review, and submit the letter as they would the other nine departments that are listed in 5A.
Right.
Right. But at that point, it may not go to the full board, because the issue with the full, going to the full board, previously, well, previous to the 5B being added, is that if there ever was a question, I mean, at the end of the day, it's, as it stands now with 5B, it's going to the board for their approval, and the board meets every two weeks. So with that, if the desire was to have a So with that, if the desire was to have a question answered, we'd have to wait two weeks. But if, when 5B is removed, it could go back to just staff answering that question.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. I would defer to the planning board in that regard. Does the planning board want to see it? Or are they comfortable with it going back to the way that it was? I mean, that would be a-
I'd ask, I wish to wish the board members,
we'd rather review before we go to the members. I'd like to review that because kind of, you know, that's why we have all the problems, you know. At least we can review before we vote on it or recommend it to the ordinance committee.
Also, this is why I really think that rather than attempting to write an entire new draft while sitting here around a table, maybe this order only specifically addresses that one paragraph of the marijuana ordinance. But I think we need to look at all of it and know what we want to put in it. And then we can draft it. You know, you just-
Well, so just to clarify, the only thing we can do in this public hearing is clean up 5B. We can't write a new ordinance under this.
Mimi, it looks like you want to say something. Go ahead.
Yeah. I just, if this is a requirement of the law and we can't look at an entire set of problems without specifying them all in one hearing, I really don't know what to say. You know, I actually, I have ancient now, but nevertheless, a fairish amount of experience in drafting legislation or helping state entities draft legislation. And in all of my experience, you know, I think you have to look at the problem as a whole. You can't write something until you know what else is being tied into it. There are collateral problems. It just-
Yes, yes. Yes.
I'm trying to-
And I agree.
Yeah.
It's just, we would have to take it up under a different order in a different public hearing to accomplish what I'm seeing in the proposed document, is all I'm saying. I'm not saying we shouldn't do it. I'm just saying we haven't advertised for it.
Well, fair enough. And I'm, I'm glad that we're basically on the same page here because, you know, I think we both are on the same ends.
Yes. Yes. And right now, I just want to make it so that your board isn't doing more work than it should be doing since you're not the permitting authority and that should properly be the responsibility of this committee. And that is correct.
Hmm.
Okay. What you're holding in 5B is, well, I think we'll have to think about whether it should come out entirely or whether we just want to have language saying that we'll review it and send the advisory letter.
Yeah. And I defer to your board on that.
Right. And that's why, I guess, the question to ask the board members, what, what's our preference? Go right back to, to the advisory letter?
Yeah. Well, I'm with you if we're, I think it's reasonable for us to look at it.
So Mimi, you're saying, as Tony said, you want to look at it first, right?
Your site plan, though.
Yeah, I think it's good for us to look at it first.
Okay. Kate?
Yeah, I think that from, in my opinion, it's fine to take out our site plan review in 5B, but in fact, only if all those things that we would do are being done by your committee. And I think that's part of why Ms. Panage prepared the document that she did. It really, the, the problem, as I see it up to this point, is that very often, because it's unclear who should be doing it, it hasn't been done to the extent that it should be done and someone needs to do it. Whether it's us or you is much less important to me than that it gets done.
And I take that point. In the prior public hearings, there was, to my memory, a great desire to have the planning staff and the board continue with the review process that had been happening. And it seemed from my percep, I mean, maybe from your perspective, it wasn't going well. But over the years, it seemed to me like it had gone quite well and we haven't had a lot of problems with the special permits that we've issued. And so my understanding from our discussions in the hearings was that we wanted to keep that site plan review happening over in planning, but we didn't want to raise it to the level of the major site plan review because that was onerous. And then that that particular reference got put in by mistake was my perception.
I, I think you would find if you talked with planning staff that sometimes things that they were suggesting, things that ended up in letters, there was not really the ability to enforce those things. One could suggest those things to the applicant, but there was no real power to make the applicant comply. And so whether any of those things have caused problems, I can't speak to that. But there is a great potential for problems to be caused because the letter is merely advisory, doesn't have a lot of enforcement power. And if whoever the permit granting authority is, whether it be us or you, doesn't specify all those things very clearly, it could become problems.
Okay.
Did they become problems in the past? I can't speak to that, but I think there's a perception that the comments of staff were not adequately heeded by some applicants.
Okay. So just to clarify how that would move forward from this committee at this time, and I think it's pretty consistent with what had happened in the past. We have this now seven standard conditions that we put on each special permit. And usually, with each unique application, we would also have letters from DPW, planning, we would reference those in the conditions that the recommendations that had been made in those letters needed to be complied with prior to, you know, whatever next steps they needed to do for their, you know, either getting a building permit, if that was impeded by whatever the recommendation was. So to my recollection, we tried to take those recommendations and tie them to the issuing of the special permit in that way. Now, does that mean everything happens perfectly after that?
No, we'd probably necessitate the fact in that the planning board would review the recommendation and vote on it before it went to ordinance. No, in other words, you know, planning staff would obviously review it, make recommendations. Then at a planning board meeting, we would obviously review that letter and we'd either make amendments, et cetera, take a vote on it, and then forward it to your committee.
If that's what the board wishes to do, that's-
Is that, and I'm looking for input from the other members of the planning board?
Kind of, it makes sense. That's how we've been doing it. We kind of review it and then we submit it.
A bit of a word salad at the moment. Yeah.
Okay. Counselor McGivern would like to be heard. Counselor McGivern?
Thank you, Chair Bacon.
Thank you for your patience.
No, no problem. I'm listening with, with great, great intent of everybody, what everybody's talking about because I think it's very important with the, the planning board input is always important. And I think the original intention of the language was to get them involved in some, a new industry in the city of Foyle. But I want to go back to what Commissioner Panage said and the two things I'm hearing about findings in the review for a special permit. If I'm correct, this special permit is what I call a special permit within our zoning ordinance, our zoning language itself. And not only does local law kick in, but more important, state law kicks in. But with the exception of one, every special permit we've dealt with, the zone pre-exists on the parcel where the special permit was proposed. Therefore, the findings by state law and the review by state law, what uses can happen on that parcel have already taken place. We're not redoing that when we do a special permit for, within a zone. We're taking and singling out certain uses and saying, do it by special permit. And, and I think that's why our review is a little bit different at this level, more about the, the special conditions Counselor Bacon mentioned and the review that we want to mitigate the neighborhood issues and anything that's going on, whether it be traffic or whatever. But we're not changing the zoning. We're only existing in what already, already exists. And therefore, I think our review might be a little bit different and I don't want to be confused about that.
Yeah. And if I can just answer that, or try to, the thing about state law and it, I mean, I should probably back up a little. The special permitting under state law as well as our law, the 48, the zoning ordinance, does not just talk about uses. It talks about things like special permits. There's an entire section, section nine, that goes into special permits. And it specifically gives cities the authority to establish those permits. And it also talks about what kinds of permits you can issue, what kinds you can't. And there's a sentence or two that goes so far as to say, you know, the permit granting authority, whatever it is, should have written findings explaining what their decisions are, the ordinance allowing for the special permits and special permits under the zoning law do have to be authorized by our zoning ordinance. We can't just make them up on the fly. They set out, you know, in order to grant this permit, the permit granting authority must find. And that's not just directed to the planning board. And the city council is the permit granting authority for all of the really important special permits. And, you know, nobody, including me, wants to impose any extra work on you guys. You work hard enough as it is for very little by way of compensation. But it certainly looked to me as though this is something that we should have been doing all along as a city and we just haven't been.
Okay. Thank you. So at this point, is Attorney Bissonette with us? So I just want to say this out loud and see if I'm in the right chapter here. It seems to me that we need to ask Attorney Bissonette to look at 5B and write it in a way where we're not requiring a major site plan review under our marijuana ordinance, but that we're referencing the appropriate laws so that if it would be required otherwise, it will happen. And that if it is not required, we are still seeking a review by the planning board and a recommendation from the planning board. Would that be an accurate summary of what I've heard?
I would, I would think so. Anyone else want to weigh in? I think that summarizes, and I said earlier, we would review it, vote on it, and forward it to you folks.
Okay.
It seems, it seems that 5A mostly is the department heads and the planning department.
Right.
Yeah.
5B, I think, still keeps our planning board protection in there and you guys weighing in on what you've seen. And that's very important guidance for us. You know, so we appreciate your input and whatever things you think we should consider now. And we would receive that before we would actually vote on the special permit.
Yeah.
Well, that's perfect. As far as myself as an individual counselor, it seems to me I've got 5A gives me the department, the planning department. 5B gives me the planning board. Now I'm ready with as much information as possible to take a vote on yes or no on the permit.
And there is a lot to them, so it's very helpful to us to have that.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah.
That sounds good.
Okay.
Can I just, just for one, Madam Chair, ask anyone on the board or planning staff have anything to add, delete, or any questions concerning what we just talked about? I make sure, I make sure that there's a comfort level from the, the planning side with what we're, we're committing to do and not do.
Yes. My question is, how does, it sounds like, in order to beef up the procedures, do you think you need a new order to investigate that, to sort of take up the kinds of things that were suggested for review? Or is that something you can simply do internally without an order? Just wanting to make sure that that-
Seems like you could just do it.
Process is, so process changes are considered and, and put into, into process?
I think we can work it out internally, but if there's some key things that are just completely being missed, then we might have to add language. I just haven't been aware of specific things that have happened or been missed or have become problems. So I'm, you know, I don't know what part of the language is about things that we haven't done or that there's concerns that we haven't done them and which parts we have been doing all along. Do you know what I mean? It's very comprehensive. So it's hard for me to say what's filling a gap and what is what we've already been doing. I couldn't really differentiate. Counselor Murphy Ramboletti?
Yeah, I'm definitely digesting all of this and there's a lot of, of good conversation. I guess, you know, the things that, so my understanding, just between the homework I've been trying to do and my, my own experiences actually working years ago in this department is just that the things that we're trying to focus on are in 5A. And I, I think, I just want to emphasize that whatever gets decided, I, I believe, in my opinion, this is probably me just personally, but I, I definitely don't want to necessarily have the city council have all of these things that we require and we'll have to look into. And I haven't really heard anyone discuss it, but there is a section seven, ooh, 7107. There's these findings that we are supposed to be, you know, referring to. And so I guess what I've seen personally happen is what others have said is that we do have it go through the planning staff review. We have it go through planning board. We get these recommendations. But then there just isn't really a way for us as a body or even the planning board to really like, we, we can't call, we don't call those people back in. Not that I want to, but there's just really no way for us to say, are you actually following through with these things that, that we asked for? So, you know, I did file this order, so I, I did feel compelled to provide that perspective just from seeing it firsthand in my former employment.
Madam Chair?
Counselor Jordan?
Yeah.
The order itself, though, only speaks to 5B. Just, just for the record, that's technically what's been advertised. So it doesn't cater 7107, which Counselor Murphy Ramboletti makes good points. We, they absolutely should consider these points.
Those are considered.
And those, and, and those are in the law. So those are required to be considered in every permit that the council votes on so that we have to make sure all of these different points are taken into consideration. So hopefully that's happening because the law requires it to happen.
Can I just check in with Attorney Bissonette? I'm not seeing any other hand. So Attorney Bissonette, do you feel you have an understanding that if we request of you to put something in legal form for us relative to 5B that eliminates the major site plan review but keeps the board role in the review and giving us a recommendation? Are you set to give us language to that effect?
Yes. My only question would be, only question would be whether or not the county could act prior to getting that recommendation under 5B.
Okay. Well, there's a question.
That makes sense, though. I, I think I would personally- That makes sense, though. I, I, I think I would personally vote.
Want to wait.
I, I wouldn't want to vote on it before we got your recommendation or whatever materials you were going to give us.
Right.
Seems like that would defeat.
It would be pointless to have it if we weren't going to.
Why would we have an ordinance that requires it and then not listen, you know, not have it? Seems rather pointless.
Continue till you see it.
I'm sorry?
So continue till we see it, right? Or you continue to see it?
You mean his language?
Yeah.
Okay.
Wouldn't you want to continue and just?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes, yes.
All right.
So attorney Bissinette, the general sense seems to be, and of course, everything's going to be subject to debate, you know, at a subsequent meeting, but the general sense seems to be that we would want to see the recommendation of the planning board before we voted to grant a special permit. And I.
Understood.
I think.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, so, so our request is for Legal to put together some language for us and then.
For five B.
For five B. And then, so I would like a motion to continue the public hearing. If we go to April twenty sixth, will that work for you, attorney Bissinette?
Yes, it will.
Okay, so I'd like to entertain a.
Should do, have we given him enough instruction now that it's to eliminate this major site plan review language and to give, okay.
He said he understood that.
Okay, all right, just want to make sure Mike has what he needs. All right, so I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing until, would you say, April twenty sixth?
Yes, at six thirty.
Okay.
I have a question. If I decide to vote against it, then we would continue the public hearing and we're going to have to vote on it right now?
So right now, we don't have any language to vote on.
Okay.
Is the problem.
Is there a reason to do it right now?
Because we're taking forever. This is like the third meeting and it's going to continue dragging and dragging and before you know it.
We'll have language and that's. Yeah, that's.
It becomes moot after a while.
I agree with Counselor Rivera. I think we've been taking way too long for this. I feel like by the time the winter comes, we're still going to be talking about the same thing.
Well, I think if we get the legal language on the twenty sixth, we should be able to be done. But that's just me, maybe I'm overly optimistic. Anyway, there's a motion to continue to the twenty sixth. I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing, planning board till April twenty sixth at six thirty P M. Go ahead.
That would be fine.
Sure. Good point. How about April twelfth?
You just need four, I think.
Yeah, Tony won't be here.
You guys should be okay. Or the twelve is what? What day is, what day is?
Are you also going to have the language from Mike Bissinette?
That's what we do, we have to wait for, that's why I'm wondering. Yeah, if we don't.
Maybe he'll have it by the twelfth, you know?
Attorney Bissinette?
Yes, that's what I was thinking.
Do you think? For planning, would, do you think you'd be able to have it by then?
Why don't we shoot for April twelfth, we'll have you by then.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
You guys need me for like a little bit, I can just, you know, come in.
Just for the record, we cannot hear Kate who's speaking from the audience.
Are you?
Neither mic closer to. I forgot to press. So I'm going to move that we continue the planning board public hearing on this issue to April twelfth.
At five thirty? Okay, motion's made to continue this. April twelfth, five thirty P M, is a second motion?
Second.
Would you call the roll, Sharon?
Rosanna?
Yes, ma'am.
Gernander?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Mimi?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Okay, so I guess we're in order to take up item five and open the public hearing.
Make a motion to remove item number five off the table and open the public hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing continued from, let's see, that was continued from twelve twenty one. That the health director, building commissioner and any other relevant city official meet ASAP with the ordinance committee to discuss odor mitigation at marijuana entities in Holyoke for the purpose of amending, A, amending city ordinances and/or B, adding language to the list of conditions typically added to the marijuana special permit.
I'd.
So we're all open now, right?
Yeah. I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing, the whole planning board to discuss odor mitigation of marijuana establishments and or adding language to typical lists of conditions induced by Counselor Bartley, Murphy and Vacan.
So moved.
Second motion?
Second.
Okay.
Sharon, do you call the roll, please?
Rosanna?
Yes, ma'am.
Gernander?
Yes, ma'am.
Kate?
Yes.
Mimi?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Okay, so I have been informed that our health director will be unable to join us tonight. But I also have been given a document, I'm not sure if everybody has it. It is a document that was submitted in one or more public hearings relative to Holyoke Odor and Air Quality Control Plan template for MMEs, Marijuana Manufacturing Entities, Marijuana Cultivation and Manufacturing. So if everybody doesn't have it, I'm just going to by title, put it into the public hearing and make sure everybody gets a copy of it. It's by one of the members of the public that has submitted it to us for consideration. It's, it's, there's quite a lot to it. So relative to this particular matter, it, as we all know, came up initially in the buffer context, which was a complicating factor to that whole discussion. But nonetheless, part of a developing industry in the city and then with some of the experiences being felt now locally that those throughout the country who are further along with the marijuana manufacturing than we are having more experience with it already. So I think the Board of Health, Planning, we are all trying to get our arms wrapped around what sort of the state of the art and what mitigation factors can be brought to bear. And also to some earlier points made, what enforcement we can put into our language so that if there is a problem, it can actually be addressed. So right now, I think for us, we're still in information gathering. I know that Aaron's been looking at this in, in his department and Sean as well in his department. So I think for me, if we accept this in, if there's any member of the public that wishes to address us in this public hearing now, could they make themselves known? So if there's any other information for us to take in, we will do that. You see anything? I'm not seeing anyone from the public, I'm not seeing any other hands. So I think for now, what is the will of the committee? I mean, this is something that is sort of evolving now, this issue. And I know in some ways there's a desire to hurry up and get things done. On the other hand, sometimes you get better information over a little bit of time. So what is the will of the committee? What would you like to do? I mean, we'll table it, but I don't know how far into the future you want to go. Counselor? Yes.
Yeah, I thought, I thought that this was complied with, I guess I was wrong, just because we know that this is going to be ongoing. So I thought we could, I would make a motion to have this be complied with while we wait to see what's going on with all the research as far as odor mitigation. Because we know things, more things are going to come up, but if we keep table, tabling these things, then we just end up with you know, a stack of things in the jacket and I think it makes it harder to keep up with.
Well, here's the only technical logistical challenge that we have with this. So in a public hearing, both we and the planning board have advertised and everybody's in the process of pulling language together to recommend to us, which takes time because there's different research and different information out there. So if we are to preemptively close the public hearing and not do anything at all, then it would require a long wait before the zoning could be addressed again. So given the fact that we've advertised it and we're in this part of the process, we really owe it to the constituents who have serious issues and concerns about this to complete our work.
I don't have any problem with the public hearing. I'm just saying that if no one has any, I mean, if there aren't any comments about it and there aren't any new ideas, I, I just feel like we, we need to do more research, so, but I don't, I just, I, I, I'm not in favor of tabling things eternally, unless that's just the only way we can handle this. I would rather, you know.
Right. So, so right now, the only way that we can handle this is to put it to the future until the different departments can give us the language that we need and they're not ready yet, so.
They're going to be ready for years. They're still trying to figure out how to, how to deal with odor mitigation.
Well, no, no, it, it's a serious matter. It's a serious matter, it's impacting local businesses, we, we really need.
Right, but we don't have a way to deal with odor mitigation yet because there's laws in place to deal with the odor mitigation. We need to have our, our health board or whoever deals with enforcement in our city start to follow up and enforce the laws that are in place. But I don't, there's nothing new we can do that's not already in the general laws that will stay.
Well, but there is perhaps something new that we can do within our marijuana ordinance. And so we look forward to getting that information. But I will go by the will of the committee, if you want to go to April or May to give them more time.
Madam Chair?
Counselor Rivera?
I would like to motion that the order is complied with because this is the second time we meet. There's been information already gathered and there's already the, I believe the department heads are already working on trying to get the information that we need. If, if, if it is for whoever that wants to continue the issue, they can file the next order again to bring them back in to find out what the information is that they got for a later date. Because at the same time, we're just going in circles with the same one if we keep tabling it and we keep tabling it. Because the order technically says is that we all come together and just meet ASAP. We've done that twice already.
No, no.
Nine oh five, it doesn't say that the commissioner and other relevant city officials meet ASAP with the ordinance committee to discuss odor mitigation at marijuana entities in Holyoke for the purpose of amending city ordinance, adding language. So we've done that already on, on, on two separate occasions, to be honest. Now we're in the process of getting the information that is needed so that we can decide on whether or not we're going to amend ordinances or add language. That is a whole nother order.
Okay, so as a matter of order.
And I made a motion, just.
How, okay, so here's the thing. We're in a public hearing, we're not in a committee meeting taking up an order. We took up the order previously in committee. In committee, we adopted a seventh condition for the special permits. And we also agreed to go to public hearing because there were concerns around enforcement in our ordinance, et cetera. That's where we're at now. So we're past the point at which we could have called it complied with. We would have had to have done that before we advertised and went into a public hearing. Now we're in the process, so we have to finish the process. As, I mean, that's just.
Yeah.
The, the way that it works.
Yeah.
All right, so on.
Can I just address it? I just, an important point, because the counselor raises a good point. You're saying, what, why is this taking so damn long? And if it's going to keep taking so long, come back to us when it's ready. That point still is equally valid. I don't know why it's taking forever, months and months and months and months for people to, because this is now three plus months to get to the answer. But unfortunately, we need a public hearing because this is a zoning regulation. We have a very prescribed process to change the ordinance. So it isn't like if we went and said, well, come back to me then, then you, we'd have to restart everything all over again and there's a big rigmarole. That's the only downside to, to these. So unfortunately, we're left in this holding pattern. But what is fair, though, is we shouldn't, if we're not ready, if, you know, we should be getting insight from these department heads. Like what's taking so long? Is it April? Is it May? But whatever date you pick, be ready to go because, you know, we need action on these items. And it's a valid point that these things are taking too long. I know people are busy and I'm sure it's a logistical issue. That's why it's taking long because there's so, there's over staffing, you know, understaffing and overworked and all that.
Right.
But. Am I bad on the public hearing piece if, if I misconvaluded the idea?
No, no, it's, it's, we're all in a learning curve permanently with the complexities of government. Aaron Vega, I see your hand.
Thanks, so thank you, Madam Chair, everyone in the committee. So yeah, there needs to be a way to continue the conversation. There's not a direct order from me on this from my office per se, but obviously we're involved in the conversation. And I think just to relay a couple of things, obviously, some of you were at the financial, finance meeting. This is obviously an impact fee use to bring on a consultant. So that's something that we can work on together to bring on a third party. There is an enforcement issue, I think, that can be done with the department heads, the building, building department and board of health. But I'm not going to comment on that part because that's their, their, their department, their scope. But it's already in the ordinance to say they have to control the mitigation of the, mitigate the odor. So it, the framework is there. You know, we, we, we have other examples, you know, my office has other examples of other ordinances in other cities. And it really becomes the regulate, the, you know, the enforcement, the regulation of what will happen on warnings and et cetera. But we need the data, so we need to get, as, you know, as some of you, again, in the finance committee, we discussed, you know, whether it's getting, you know, getting a, a study done, what's the current air quality and the odors in the air now? And then as these campus companies come online, you know, is that impacting getting set up devices that Sean was able to talk about last time? The, the chair, the department head of Board of Health. And so just, you know, we are working on it, but I think that there's, and you're working on it too. So I think that there's it's a bigger issue. I think that there are avenues that we're putting together. So again, I don't want to speak for other departments, but I know that they are working on it. We have a core campus group that meets once a month to go over these issues. And so this is obviously something I think that we can work together on and get something going. And utilizing the impact fees to get some studies together, a third party vendor in here to help us with the studies and get the information, the data that we need to change the laws, as they say.
Thank you, and I think what would be helpful for us is if there's an ordinance that you've seen that you think is useful. And if Sean has come across things, I don't think we're trying to answer every question ordinance. We're just trying to set up a process that allows the odor issues and the health issues to be addressed within the ordinance. Not that we have to know what every problem might be or is or isn't. We just want to have a process and an enforcement aspect. And so I think, you know, if Sean and you could give us things like that, we could pretty much then ask Legal to put it in some form for us. And I, you know, I just don't know, Sean obviously has been looking at it, but I just don't know in terms of time for you and he and whoever else might be involved. Is May a better date than April? Because I do think it does get frustrating for people to have things keep getting continued from one month to another. So if we give a little more time, then maybe we could get something, some closure. Perhaps in May, if we go there.
I, I think in May would work absolutely, and I think there'll be other things coming from us as well on this issue as well. So, yeah, May sounds good.
Okay, all right, I'm just looking for the date. So.
I'll be ten and twenty four.
May twenty fourth is, does that sound like? May 24th is, does that sound like a good date? Okay, okay, thank you. So I'd entertain a motion to continue to May 24th at 6:30.
So moved.
I'm in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Entertained motion to continue the meeting of the planning board to, I'll check his first, Sharon, May 24th, look good?
Yes.
May 24th at 5:30 PM. There's a second motion?
Second.
Could you call the roll?
Yeah, Rosanna.
Ma'am.
Gernander.
He's out of the room right now.
Okay. Kate?
Yes.
Mimi?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
We're going to go to four to zero on that vote.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to take up item six.
So moved.
All in favor? Aye. Item six is, um, and to open the public hearing?
Make a motion to open the public hearing?
All in favor? Aye. This is a public hearing filed by Counsel Bartley that the Holyoke zoning ordinances be amended to no longer allow daycare services in R1 or R2 district by right, but only by city council's special permit. Counsel Verden? Oh, oh, we gotta wait for the beginning.
Entertained motion to open the, uh, public hearing, planning board to take up a zone to exchange, amend section 43, table of principal uses, principal use A for family daycare home to allow daycare services by special permit of the city council induced by Counsel Bartley. Second motion?
Second.
Second.
Did you call the roll here?
Rosanna?
Yes, ma'am.
Gernander?
Yes.
Okay. Kate?
Yes.
Mimi?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Thanks for the water.
Anybody else want one? Already got them. Okay, good. You ready to roll or?
Yes, I recognized you.
Oh, did you? Oh, good.
I thought I did.
Oh, okay. So a couple of things, I don't know, is Attorney Dignan online or is it just Attorney Bissinon here with us tonight?
No, unfortunately, it's just me.
Oh, okay. No, that's never unfortunately, Mike. No, not at all. Um, yeah, but Mike, let me ask you, um, do you have a copy of Attorney Dignan wrote a legal opinion apparently on this topic, Counsel Bartley, who, um, reached out to me before the meeting to say that, um, he had a personal matter come up, um, unfortunately. But at least as it relates to this, um, he informed me that Attorney Dignan did a legal opinion on this topic. Have you had a chance to debrief with her on that or?
I have not.
Okay.
I wasn't aware it was coming up tonight.
Oh, okay.
So the only indication I had from her was that there was an aspect of daycare that could be addressed in this manner. Certain ones are by right and cannot be, but different ones of a different type can be. But that's all I know.
Okay. So I think by way of topic on this, then I think it would behoove us to all get a copy of the Dignan legal opinion, number one, so we can, um, know what we can and cannot do. Urban legend in the past has historically been, there's nothing we could do about these as a general rule, that they were outside of our purview to put these type of restrictions. So these things can become controversial when there's lots of neighborhood opposition to people just opening up a business at their home, like opening up other businesses. And it should be noted that, um, if we do have authority to have some purview over that, that's vital information for the council to have. Number two, I would note that we already regulate by permit, either by special permit or by a home occupation permit, pretty much any business that goes on in a residential zone currently. But for one reason or another, two things have gotten carved out of that, group homes and daycares. And if we can begin to, and we do have purview over those, that would make a great number of people happy, I'm sure. Because I periodically, not often, but I do from time to time get ones where people have some real issues with daycares just opening up in a house and they got 10, 12, who knows how many kids there. And they got all kinds of coming and going and kids and playground equipment and all kinds of stuff where people basically turn their home into a full-blown daycare center at their house when the two neighbors are like, well, gee, Mrs. O'Malley, you know, passed away and the next person that bought their house and it's been a nice quiet. Now all of a sudden, there's a daycare opened up, you know, 30 feet from my door or 50 feet from my door. And there's all this commotion. There is an opportunity potentially if, um, once we look at this, if there's some regulatory authority where these could be reviewed by special permit, that would be an interesting development. I have informed an opinion, yes, no, or maybe on it. I'd like to see the legal opinion, but it raises an interesting question. So I think the best move would be for us to continue it. I don't know if anybody wants to weigh in now on this, but, uh, at this point, get the legal opinion and then continue it to whatever. And then, um, move forward on, on what we can or cannot do. I mean, we could two weeks, uh, you know, whatever, or whatever the pleasure of the chairman is.
Counsel Rivera?
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I, I, I hear a lot of what Ms. Counsel Verden is saying and what Mr. Bartley or Counsel Bartley had mentioned when he first brought up the order, um, with regards to the daycares. I think the concern for me for it coming to special permit would then make me feel like it's kind of, it becomes down to like a picking and choosing because of us, right? Us having the power to be able to pick and choose. And sometimes that doesn't work in favor for everyone, right? Sometimes some people know the right people and get what they want versus the people that don't know the right people and don't have the vocal advocacy skills to be able to get, um, the connections that they need to be able to go through the process so that they could get their licensing. Then there's another piece that EEC has a lot of guidelines as to whether or not you can actually have the daycare in your house. They go through your traffic, they go through your backyard, they go through your neighbors. I think it's five kids per, per person. So if you're one person in your household that is managing, that is licensed through the EEC process, you only get five kids. If you have two, it's 10. But it's all strictly, strictly enforced and revised. They don't just give licenses to just anybody. It doesn't work that way. So for me, this would be another layer on top of policy. I mean, it's, it's more bureaucracy added to, to a situation where we're kind of trying to help small businesses thrive in a community like Holyoke. Um, and to be honest, um, a lot of people that I've known and I've grown up around have found a living running daycares and are being very successful at this, at, through this process. And it's kind of actually helping the Holyoke Public School system in the long run because the kids that are going through the daycares are eventually going through their pre-K program into the dual language program and it kind of trickle down effect overall. I understand and I hear the situation because I got, I got an email and a phone call today about something similar. And I'm like, it's a sticky situation, right? You live in your neighborhood for as long. Perfect example I could use is growing up in the flats, there's a basketball court there, right? Right next to the basketball court, it was an empty lot. We used to play basketball there all night. Then all of a sudden they built a house there and then they took the light out so we couldn't play anymore because the neighbor complained. We were there before the, the house was there, but we had to accommodate the house because now the house is there. So it's like, it's part of the game as, as a city growing and, and moving in a, I don't, I don't know how to say it, in another, not in another direction, but it's just like, it's inevitable for things to change and to grow. And, um, we just have to try to hold people accountable to the rules and regulations that they're supposed to be, uh, uh, held to, right? So if, if you're creating a nuisance and havoc within that community that is bothering the neighbors, then we need to go back and talk to you about your licensing and say, hey, listen, you're actually creating a nuisance and havoc to the neighbors. Instead of actually trying to not permit people to get the licensing because of the neighbors that may just not like them, period.
Counsel Maldonado-Villas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, as a son of a daycare provider, I will echo what you said. It is not easy to get licenses or permits or anything to have a daycare at the house. I know my mom, the many years that she's had to go through to even get up to eight kids, I think she's at right now. So it's not a simple process and there is already a lot of bureaucracy just to get that. So I think adding another layer at the city, you know, some of the daycare providers I know are Spanish speaking only. So you're already adding that sort of like intimidation factor of coming in here, requesting a special permit. And then on top of that, if, if, I think this is a longer, a bigger conversation. If there's a house that has like 10 kids, I mean, I don't have a child, but I worked at a place where I know $200 a week was like the minimum, like two for childcare. So I think that's a bigger conversation that we need to have versus like trying to make it harder for them to get permits. How do we make it easier for our kids, our children, our community to get access to proper childcare? Yeah.
Counsel Verden?
Yeah. All great points. Again, the issue of childcare, the issue of people wanting to start businesses, that's all great. I, I think as you dive into this issue some more, you'll see that what's going on though, however, that you need to consider is we're not trying to prevent people from opening businesses. We would love for them to open a business. The problem is they don't want to open a business. They don't want to put it in a commercial space or we have, that's what the whole purpose of zoning is. Here's residential, here's commercial, here's industrial. I mean, the whole system is designed, that's the whole, like in the early seventies when we, the, the state government created zoning was to say, these uses, these uses and these uses. We don't just all have, I mean, at, at some point, if you just say, well, let's, why do we even have zoning at all, right? Because just do whatever you want with your, it's like the old, uh, you know, my home is my castle, I can do whatever I want with it. Well, not really because as long as what you do doesn't impact me, then yeah, I don't have a problem with it. But as soon as you do something that impacts my use and enjoyment of my property, now this becomes the creature of government, right? What are these boundaries? And that's what the whole zoning thing is designed to do. Every business that tries to go into residential requires a permit. Why are we carving out and it would potentially, historically to my knowledge, the only reason daycare has been carved out is because I didn't think it was. This is all new information to me. So, um, historically, to my knowledge, we weren't able to regulate daycare. Now, if there's some new information that says we can, then maybe we, we could because it has been the consternation of, of many residential areas. And I, and I don't know this new information. And again, I'm speaking totally esoterically about the notion of business going into residential is pretty much, that's why we have home occupation permits, that's why we have special permits, right? So that if you're going to be running a business out of your house, you need to get a permit because if what you do isn't, if everybody's okay with it, then there's no issue. But there is a vehicle that I can call Counsel Rivera because you have a home occupation permit and I live next door to applicant X. So I can call my counselor and say, you know what, when that guy comes up for renewal next year or whatever, I've got one, two, three, four, five reasons. But if there's no permit process, there's no protection for the neighbors. That process is the special permit and is the, um, because we have conditions that if conditions are violated or if there's an annual renewal of a permit, which we just perfunctory give them again if there's no issues. But there's a vehicle for people to get relief if there is problems. And the concern is like you have single family house, single family house, single family house, and everybody here bought into X and now somebody buys a middle house and says, oh, I'm going to open up a daycare with 10 kids and we're going to have people coming and going and trash and this and that and, uh, play, you know, playground equipment all over. I mean, it, it, it's no longer a home. It's turned into a, a daycare because somebody doesn't want to go get a storefront somewhere and open their daycare business. They want to run it out of their house so, because it's cheaper for them. But then it's like, well, oh, you don't like it next door? Well, screw you. Too bad for you and you over here. Yeah, I know you bought your house, um, screw you. You just have to deal with me now, right? And, and if we have like, where do I go when I have an investment in a home and everybody can just open up and do whatever they want next door and I have to live with that? So now I go to try and sell my house, it's not worth as much because somebody's going to come out next door and say, oh, I don't want to move next to that, you know? Or I don't want to deal with that. You've, you've devalued other people's property. The point is it's, it's a messy business. I agree. And I have yet to hear of a better process than this whole permitting process. It's, we have to be mindful that, you know, is it a who you know and all that type of stuff? Gee, I hope that's not the case. I, I certainly that doesn't work for me. I, I base it on the use and is there major public opposition? And I have voted against special permits where there was significant public opposition because that is the people being heard. But, you know, one or two complainers or it's not a big deal or they're just, it's a gripe versus real issues. You know, we have an opportunity to weigh the facts on that, but nevertheless, there is a permit process. So I agree with you, it's difficult. And, um, generally I'd, where, where you get into trouble is people, and it's not just daycares, it's a lot of other things. They start saying, well, I want my moving business to have here or I have a limo service. Now they got five limos in the driveway and it's, you know, at what, some of these uses become things. And I know there's certain idea here like, well, do we really need the city council involved in all these things anymore? I still maintain yes, because these are important protections for the citizens and we're elected too. And the other thing that generally concerns me is when we take these type of things, there's an accountability factor to us too. Because if people don't like what the planning board does, well, maybe I can indirectly vote out the mayor who might five years from now vote out a planning board member. Whereas what a counselor, I directly elect these people. If I'm not happy, I can vote you guys out. And I, I, that's why we have these authorities and, um, that, that's why I, you know, you need to seriously consider, how do you protect residents when people are trying to put business uses into residences? It's, it's an important topic, not an easy one, admittedly.
If I could add real quick.
Counsel Rivera?
And I didn't know there's a lot of other people that got their hands up too, but it's just, um, I just want to make sure that we harp on to that a lot of people that are opening their daycares are doing it because they can't afford to actually pay for daycare, right? The reality of what it is, daycare is super expensive. I paid, I was paying $225 a week, about $900 a month. It makes more sense to actually open your own daycare and take care of your own kids at the same time of taking care of a couple of other kids. So this is a, 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 an issue of equity, right? And trying to help people, um, keep their homes and stay in their neighborhoods while they, if they're married and they have the family or they have the dynamic of both a mom and a dad in the household to try to run this. And if they don't, then you have a single mother who's out here trying to raise a family and pay for daycare at the same time. So for me, I was raised by a single mother, so I will always side with a single mother when it comes to them trying to open a business, a, a, a business for themselves, um, or try to come up or try to, uh, uh, make it so that they're becoming self-sustainable, not off the government, not off of anyone else, because they're becoming independent business sole proprietors. That's, I just wanted to make that point.
I don't want to keep it all counsel if planning folks want, I, I think some, one of your planning folks might want to speak into.
I don't know.
Rosanna Lopez, I have my hand up.
Rosanna, go ahead.
This kind of sounds like a targeted community, um, only because to piggyback on both what Maldonado Rivera said, most people that start, um, home care is usually because they can't afford daycare or they have some type of disability. And instead of staying home and collecting disability, they choose to work and this might be their way of work. Kids and toys, I have a friend who owns a house. She has six kids, has by her house. There's toys all over the place and that's not a daycare. I live next to a bus stop. There's kids throwing trash all over. They run around, they leave garbage. So should I call the school department to change the bus stop? Like, I mean, I think like we're reaching here and if you have a property, a house, you have rights, right? So you can talk to your neighbor, you have insurance. So you can talk to your neighbor, you have insurances. For the most part, these kids aren't there at 10 o'clock at night, right? So daycare hours are working hours. So if it's bothering you, you're obviously not working. You might be retired or you might just be staying home. But the whole purpose of home providing daycare is to help the community grow. So now taking away, um, home care providers, most, not everyone has transportation. So now you're telling me I have to drive over here to Holyoke, um, Community College to get a daycare to Chicopee? When it's like three times as much? And then there's the other side that some people feel as though bigger daycare centers are not safe. So a mom who just had a newborn baby would feel safer in a home daycare where that baby's getting one to one? Cause you can only have two infants than in a facility where they have six and seven infants and four vice versa. So I, I, I hear what you're saying, the traffic in and out, but there's traffic everywhere. When the bus stop is here in my house, they take all my parking, all these parents, the traffic is crazy. They run the stop signs. I have to wait for them to leave so I can park. Should I change the bus stop? Should I complain about that? So I'm a little confused because I feel like this is a targeted community providers. Because what's going to happen is exactly what Israel said. So now I'm going to pick and choose who has the best application, who could present this and well, and maybe you could have a daycare. This guy can't have a daycare because I don't like him. And no matter what you say, Mr. Jordane, you pick and choose as well. So I think it's very unfair to say that you don't pick and choose, because everyone on this committee picks and chooses. So I think we really need to be honest with ourselves and what is the, what is the language? Excuse me.
As a point of order.
Excuse me. What is the language that we're looking for here? And what is the language that we want? Because it sounds like it's prejudice at this point.
As, as a point of order in the public hearing and in our committee meetings, we do not, we address everybody through the chairs of our various committees and boards. We do not address individuals and in particular get in debate by name. So let's just.
Yeah, can we stop calling people prejudice at every meeting? It's getting a little odd.
I didn't, I, that's not what I said. I didn't say people prejudiced, I said it sounds.
Oh, I must, I must have heard it the other way.
So I'm, I'm, I'm making the point of order, so I would, I would appreciate that. So I will recognize the other people that have their hands up, but I just want to say, I think before we get into too deep a discussion, we first have to hear from legal so that we're even clear what we're talking about, because I, we're having a very broad discussion and I'm not even sure, um, we're on point. So I think.
Say this again.
Well, we, we don't really have a choice because we don't have the information in front of us to even know what we can be discussing at this point. So we have to understand what legal said and I just.
And, and Madam Chair, just to point out the process that because this is a joint public hearing.
Yes.
Once planning board closes their part of the public hearing, we send a recommendation to ordinance committee. So obviously it's not something that's going to, you know, be decided in one session. We have to get.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. And, and I mean, certainly if planning wishes to proceed as you did with the other one.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, if legal can, I know that she looked at it to even, um, advise the maker of the order if the order was in order. So that's the extent of my knowledge, but.
Certainly want to review the legal opinion and other information.
So, um, I'll recognize Counsel Rivera, Jenny Rivera.
Thank you, Chair. So I'm also going to echo something that, um, Counselor Rivera stated as well as Rosanna. I live here in the flats, as you guys all know, and behind me, there is a daycare. She's been here forever. She has a two-family home, just like mine. She lives on the second floor and she has converted her first floor into her daycare. Um, she's got staff that works with her there. She's got a lot of kids and I've been here, because when I worked at Ian White, I had the whole summer off. I cannot say, I heard the kids making all this noise, all these ruckus. Or she lives on a dead end street on Eli Street, never a problem with traffic there. Um, and like Rosanna said, it's a daycare, so these parents are there during work hours. I, I, she, like I said, she lives in the middle house, there's two houses right next to her. One of them is a sing- a single, um, um, she works at the post office. So she's single, she's got a two-family. The one next to her is elderly people and none of us here have complained because we can't say that we hear all this noise. Her yard is always clean, there's kids there, they have nap time. Um, when I lived up on Beach Street, my neighbor had a daycare as well. And I cannot say that I ever heard any of this going on either. Now, I worked also at Ian White. I had people calling Ian White all the time complaining, because the parents are trying to go into the school to get their kids. There wasn't a daycare there. There was just homeowners complaining that there was traffic there, there's. So there's going to be people that complain about everything, but so they have their right to their property. I believe the people, if they want to have their right to have a daycare, they should. It should not be looked at that there's trash, there's, I live in the corner house. People walk by, I see them on my cameras, I see them even when we're outside, they just eat something, throw it on there. It's not the daycare. She's very clean, her house, it's extremely clean. Like I can see it from my backyard, her house, very clean, they keep it clean. So I, I, I would not agree with any of that, that was saying.
Thank you. Counselor Givner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I just wanted to add that, you know, I know we're waiting for language from legal.
Traffic, never saw that.
Sorry.
So that's what I was saying. I'm all set, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Givner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to mention, um, while we wait for information from legal on no longer allowing daycare services, I just want to, uh, reiterate that it's already a, a regulated industry. Uh, home health or home daycares are very much a part of urban life and an important part of urban communities. Um, I don't have any children, as everybody seems to know. Um, and I don't have the biggest soft spot for kids, but I do have friends with children and I do have friends who run home daycare centers and for them, it's mainly because, um, they decided to do that because they also could not afford to pay 200, 300, $600 a week, living in different cities uh, for daycare services. So they found it a better idea to be able to raise their own children at home, um, while being independent and helping to care for children in their community. Um, so regardless of how this goes or whatever information comes back from legal, I would never support, um, special permitting for something like this. And I, um, don't think that people don't want to rent a fancy storefront for daycare. I think they would love to do that. I don't think it's all, always an opportunity that they can, um, afford. And I think it's important that we don't see this as an issue in our communities, because they're not an issue in our communities, um, in the urban areas. Perhaps they would become an issue in, um, less populated areas, but you know, as a, the city of Holyoke, I think it's a service that we really need, um, that our neighbors need and that would be greatly missed. So I will be surprised if this gains a lot of support, quite frankly. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Maldonado, listen and then Counselordane.
Thank you, um, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so it is kind of cold in here. Um, lots of thoughts to add, because I, this is, I try not to get personal in here, try to just stick to law ordinances, but like this is personal to me. My mom, as a daycare provider, started her daycare at the house because she had her third child, married little brother and couldn't afford daycare. And so the option was let's open up a daycare, let's do that. And it hit me a little when I, when I heard saying, oh, it's no longer a home, now it's a, a business. I, I went home every day, I had a home. Yes, there were, the basement had some toys, outside had some toys, but I was at a home. And if anything, what it was teaching me is the narrative that I was getting told at home, uh, at school was people in the flats are now no good. They don't do business, they don't work, except every day I would go home to, uh, a mother that was taking care of her kids and putting food on the table, running her own business in the flats. There's a certain narrative that comes with you have a daycare in your own house, as you're an entrepreneur, you're opening things, you're taking care of the community. With that said, the way, the, what I feel about this special, this particular order and was hinting, hearing earlier, yes, there should be a process to document or like know which sort of businesses are in residential areas. For me though, there, and I've said it from the beginning that we started working here, we have tech companies, Facebook, Google, Zoom that are in our homes every single day. Where's the attack on them? Where's the going after those big businesses? Instead, we're focusing on attacking these little ones that are literally just providing the service that the city needs at a cheaper rate, at a rate that can't, people can't afford. Childcare is ridiculous. I had the conversation today, I'm like, I'm not a parent and I cannot imagine having a child right now. Things are expensive. So having this little thing and not having to go through the whole bureaucracy, that adding steps to something that already has so many steps, just doesn't make sense to me. If anything, how about we get a list of the, the licensing board? Hey, what daycares do we have in our city? That may be a way for us to know what, what businesses exist here, but having them, asking them to come in here add another layer to simply wanting to provide daycare services to the community, family. Yeah, it just seems a, a step a little too far and not really what we want to do here as a body.
Thank you, Counselordane.
Yeah, just, just all great points everybody has made and, and I'm very sensitive to the, to, to the facts that, that made about why daycare is good and how people have had good experiences with daycares and things. And again, I, I think we need to get the legal opinion, even see if we could even do anything with this. So this isn't my order, this is Dave Barley's order. It's kind of an interesting concept. I'm speaking again, sort of devil's advocate point here to say that as someone who has been around a few years here in the room and has had constituent complaints related to bad experiences with neighbors that had daycares, um, those situations are compelling and there should be some protections for those individuals when, um, they have. Every other person who wants to operate some business in their home is supposed to get at a minimum, if you live there, a home occupation permit. You're supposed to do that. If you're actually running a home occupation out of your house legally, current law, you're supposed to get a home occupation. If you don't live there, you're supposed to get a special permit. That's our current regulations, like for example, in the overlay, you'll see things like attorney's offices. So for apparently historically daycare has been carved out of those regulations. If there's something now that we could do, maybe it, it, it bears, um, should they follow the same rules as everybody else? I think that becomes the question. Permitting, my general experience is it's never for the ones that are doing everything right. It's always to protect us against the ones that don't do things right. Um, because as a general rule, rarely do we ever turn down permits. Um, it's probably 1% of permits actually get turned down. Um, home occupation permits, it's probably one out of 200 that gets turned down. Um, everybody from people have nail salons to massage, to you name it. Um, people have, uh, musical instrument repair in their homes, there's all this stuff going on. These people are all coming into us for permits, um, currently. We could say that's good, that's bad, but the design behind that is zoning is here, why we do all of this is designed to protect the property interests of the people involved. And where government comes in to find where there is a need to have protection. If things are great and Joe daycare is wonderful, then it passes 13-0 and there's no issues. But then if there is an issue, um, somebody has someone to turn to, because there's been all kinds of problems. Um, and your constituents should have a right to appeal to you, you know? You don't just represent the people in the daycare, you also represent their neighbors. And I admittedly, this is, this is a difficult thing, um, and it's on all of these type of stuff. You could just say, I don't give a, I don't care what the hell you have to say. I'm voting for daycares 100% of the time, no matter what they do, no matter what. I don't know, I don't take touch and absolutist view on things. I listen to what everybody's saying and then vote accordingly, right? I'm, the daycare come, i- if this, if we can even do this. And again, this is all, I'm playing devil's advocate, this might even be all totally, we'll see what this legal opinion says. But Bartley raises the question, but let's just say it does say that. You would come in, they would say, yes, I'm wonderful, this would be great. There's no neighborhood opposition, everybody's in for it. Well, there's no issue. But if five, six, seven, eight people get up there and say, this is bad and here's why, should you have an opportunity to listen to those people? I don't know. Um, I, I don't think any of us should foment an opinion too hard, one way or the other on the topic until we, we learn more. And that, that's my general advice on it, so. Uh, anyways, I'll make a motion to continue it till.
Can I just?
Well, I'm here planning, yes.
Thank you. Um, I've been doing a lot of, a lot of, uh, uh, listening about this topic and I've heard some wonderful stories about some very successful and well-run daycare facilities we have in the city of Holyoke. We have many of them and God bless the few that run these facilities, because there is a need for them. But yeah, I'm thinking, you know, one way of looking at this, and again, I have no opinion, I'm, I'm, I'm waiting, I'm open-minded about it. You know, this is not saying we're denying daycare and special permit is not saying you're denying either. One way to look at this is the daycare facilities that folks have talked about this evening probably will be, will be protected. One way to look at it, again, I don't know, you know, because the fact is, as Counselordane articulated, those that are well-run are going to continue to be well-run. And a lot of your daycare operators, I guarantee you probably know the ones that are not well-run, because parents probably will move their children out of those and go to the ones that have been pointed out. So, you know, one, and again, one, just one way of looking at this is that sometimes we don't want to look at this special permit process as a way of screening anybody out, except the bad operators. But more of a way of protecting those individuals who've been doing this for a long time. We all know how regulated, you know, daycare is. So again, I've just been listening to all the comments tonight, I was listening, I said, you know, this isn't as much looking at initial steps and layers, et cetera. It may be more looking at, you know, something, these are people who want to keep a business running daycare and this process is going to actually make sure they do, the ones that are not going to do it the right way. We don't want our children here anyway. But again, we don't know, so we don't know where this is going to go.
Right. Thank you. Um, so what is the pleasure? I mean, I, we need to continue it, but, um, does, does, I'll, I'll get there. Does, um, the planning board want to try to look at it in the step manner that we did with the last one?
Get the legal opinion and see what.
And recommend to us, you know, when we go further forward? I mean, I'm just.
Yeah, well, we'd have to keep the meeting open in order to receive the opinion anyway, so.
Right.
We'd have to continue.
But I didn't know if you might want to go sooner.
Independently or jointly?
And then we'd go later or something.
Um, I guess I'll ask other members of the planning board what their thoughts of this might be. Do you want to just continue our se- our, our next hearing separately or you want to do it jointly?
Legal first, because it's the point of meeting if we don't have the legal terminology to make a, a decision.
No, the, the, the que- the question, uh, is do we want to continue, to continue our meeting separately or continue it jointly with ordinance?
I, I'd like to, if I, may I, Ms. Chair? Uh, I think, uh, continue a joint meeting. Um, this is new for me, for the daycare. And I seen some daycare in the houses, right? But I don't know what process was it, like what kind of license they needed to open them, because as a business person, uh, now I'm thinking they granted like different permit to open a daycare is a business. If they are opening business, right? So it's a business. So is the same reg- uh, rule regulations for like other businesses are or zonings, anything is new to me. Uh, I like to learn about more and better be a joint meeting, so we can learn about it. Uh, it's most, it's like safety for the kids. It's not all about business, right? I, I feel like a safety, safety is a more concern for me for the kids. Um, how city deal with that? How the health department deal with that? Does they take a visit over there? Um, once a month? I don't think so.
That's, the EC does. Very strict, very strict.
So if they do, do that. So if they do that, I like to, you know, get a number of somebody to learn more about it. Because kids' lives are more important than ours money, right? Money you can make, the kids you lose or they get disability, something happened to the kid is, is bad. So for me, you know, money is not more important than the lives are. I like to learn more. So I like to see that hearing together.
So the, the, so is the desire of the planning board to have a continued way joined public hearing with ordinance?
I'm certainly amenable to it if other members want to do that.
Whatever you want to do.
Fine. Then Counselor, do you have a date?
April 26.
Well, I do want to recognize Counselor Givner before we continue the public hearing because she had her hand up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was just curious as to whether anyone on the planning board or our building commissioner had anything to add to this conversation that spoke to the safety or any complaints about daycares in the home, you know, to this point? Because I was just wondering how it even came up, honestly.
I don't know.
Thank you.
All right. So I'll entertain a motion to continue the public hearing to the 26th of April.
So moved.
Second, I'm in favor. At 6:30, I should be precise.
Yeah, 6:30, yep.
Thank you.
Sharon, 26th at 6:30, look okay?
Sharon had to go home. She's not feeling well.
All right, well.
Supposed to call the roll, John.
I'll entertain a motion to continue the public hearing with planning board to April 26th at 6:30 P M. Is there a second motion?
Second.
Okay. Who's going to call our roll?
I'm supposed to call the roll.
Okay.
Rosanna?
Ma'am.
Your ninder?
Yes.
Myself, I'll vote yes. Mimi?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
You've voted for it.
Well, thank you all. That was quite a robust.
Boy, Bartley, Bartley should have been here for all that show, huh?
Absolutely.
He, he owes me now here for a big time. He owes me big time. I'm over here playing devil's advocate for him, you know? Yeah. I make a good devil, huh? I make a motion to take item seven off the table. Is that also a?
So I just want to see if we have folks here and have a good evening, everybody.
Thank you, planning board. Good to see you. You get to go home. How about that?
People here for 876 Grow Inc. Can you see on the zoom if anybody's here?
No.
Because I want to go to whoever's here first.
Oh, is no, is number seven here?
I'm, that's what I'm checking.
Oh, okay.
I'm not seeing.
Oh, you're number nine? Okay.
Is there anybody here from Hybrid House? I'm just going down my agenda.
Oh, help yourself, man. Take a water too. No charge.
We have a water too.
He's eating all the good ones. See you, my friend. Take care.
Madam Chair, Hybrid House is here.
Hybrid House, okay.
Hi, Rebecca Adams is here as well.
Hybrid House.
Oh, okay. So number eight, eight is here.
So we don't hear anybody for 876 Grow.
No.
Nope.
So let's just leave that.
Okay. I withdraw my motion to take seven off the table.
All right, so.
We're going to go to eight since they're here. Make a motion to remove item number eight off the table and open the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is a public hearing for a special permit application for Hybrid House LLC at 55 Jackson Street to operate a marijuana manufacturing establishment. Now, I just want to make sure I'm looking at the right application.
He numbered them, so.
Yep, he's got everything in order. Well, I don't know. Well, okay. Okay, I'm going, I'm going to give Hybrid House the floor to run through the open items in the planning response, if you'd like.
Great, thank you. Good evening, thank you.
Can you just tell me your name again? I'm sorry.
Absolutely, yes. So Rebecca Adams. And I have with me this evening John Furman as a presenter. Rick Morse is with us, who is the architect and the owner, Angelina Strano. We did present last, I believe it was just a few weeks ago and received a letter from the planning department. We successfully submitted all of our responses to, back to the planning board. And the items that we needed to address were the following. We needed a letter from Chief Pratt stating that he had reviewed our security plan and our security standard operating procedure. We did receive that letter. I did personally speak with Captain Moriarty and reviewed that information with them.
And we do have it.
Wonderful, great. And the next item was the photometric plan. We had not submitted that in our original submission for our special permit application. However, we did submit that to the planning board. And just so everyone that is here this evening understands, we will not be adding any site lighting. We are going to be adding supplemental lighting to the building. We have, I have a copy of the plan, so if anyone would like me to share that on my screen, I'm more than happy to do so. The third item that was requested in addition to our original application was additional information regarding our waste procedures. We did submit some information on page eight of our original special permit application. However, we provided supplemental information for everyone on the, at the meeting this evening, just to bring a little bit more information to you. We had noted that all hazardous waste would be stored in room 128 in flammable storage cabinets. We will contract with Clean Harbors for any hazardous material waste pickup. We have a dumpster that was originally shown on our site plans at the first meeting, which will be for general trash pickup, which will be shielded by a chain link fence. And any additional marijuana waste, I listed all of the procedures that we are going to partake in to make sure that our waste is addressed per 935 C M R 500. And the, I believe the final item that the planning board had requested was some clarification on signage at the property. There will not be any pre-development signage. The only signage that we proposed, which I believe Rick had explained to everyone at the original meeting, is just building facade signage only. And we're more than happy to answer any questions in regards to these items. Thank you.
Thank you. I think all of us were here for your presentation. Are there any open questions that any of you have in light of our review of the marijuana ordinances and the special permit standards that we have that you feel are remaining open? Or do you feel that they've been adequately addressed by the applicant at this point?
I had just a couple minor, a couple minor questions, but.
Counselor Jordan.
Yeah, thank you. One is a technical question. So if the planning department says we need X and X hasn't been submitted, like for example, this photometric plan, it's. Oh, they did today. Oh, because in the answer it said it wasn't submitted.
So that was the original one and this is the?
Mine's dated March 11th, so I don't know what you're looking at.
So.
I'm looking at the response and it says photometric plan has been ordered from a local lighting vendor and will be provided as soon as possible.
Is that what, can you put up that document maybe? I think we have it, but I'm not positive.
Sure. And so just to clarify, in our original special permit application, we did not have it. Then we received the letter from the planning department requesting all of these items. We did address, we did answer all of the items that were requested from the planning department and they were submitted, actually two weeks ago, I believe. And so you should have that. I'm just not sure if you can give me access to share my screen or if I can just go ahead and do that now.
Hopefully they're listening and giving you access.
You should have access.
Fabulous. Thank you. I appreciate it. Okay. So this is the photometric plan that we submitted.
Yeah, I wasn't sure, but.
Okay, we have a copy of that. Okay, so, all right.
Okay.
So this is not the current. Oh, okay. So you're basically updating your answer from March 11th then. On March 11th, you didn't have it, but today you do. So that's all set then. Okay. And then the, the only other question I had is to Rebecca was, it says any and all hazardous waste will be stored in waste room 128 in flammable storage containers. Can you describe what a flammable storage container is? It would seem that we would want containers that don't go on fire, but that word seems to suggest that things could burn.
Yes, I can definitely clarify.
That's a typo, I don't know.
It is. It should say flammable storage cabinets, just so you know. Yes, I apologize for that typo. And yes, so we will be designing that room to ensure that it, that it is explosion proof. The amount of flammable storage, excuse me, hazardous waste that we'll be storing at any given time will be within the correct limits. We will make sure that Clean Harbors has scheduled picks, pickups, excuse me, so that therefore we will not have an abundance of ethanol stored in that facility at that, in that location. Does that answer your question?
Um, almost. When you say that they'll come for pickups, like how frequently do you anticipate that? Like once a week or a couple times a week?
So yes, so typically I am anticipating anytime, probably two to three times per week. And that's at a maximum amount. That's a very heavy amount. At this time, I probably cannot give you any more information just because we're still in the design process. I'm more than happy to follow up with you.
Not, not necessary, but in terms of the, this thing about flammable cabinets, that's designed in the event there would be a fire, is it anticipated that there would be things in there that would be highly flammable?
No. So the amount of storage that we'll have will be per fire code. So we're going to work with the fire department, make sure that, you know, the amount of any type of flammable materials that we have on site will be within the code limits.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
By the way, actually, one thing is, does the fire chief, I know we have the police chief reviews your security plan. Does the fire chief review your fire suppression and plan? And by the way, do we have sprinklers, are sprinklers in this building and would those be installed?
So to answer your question, we will be interacting with the fire department. They will come in and do their normal fire inspection. However, because of the design of the facility, we're going to have a separate code consultant come into and help with the design of the facility because we are designing a C1D1 and a C1D2 extraction lab. And so the fire department will be reviewing the code letter as we go through that design process.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who has any, I don't see any hands? Any other questions from anybody else on this? Counselor Rivera?
I have a question, but it doesn't, kind of, it's just, kind of doesn't fall in line with this. It's just, I'm having an issue with a definition of community impact fees and I'm wondering if any of you guys could possibly help me better understand what the definition is.
I'm from our team. I'm sorry.
Because I, I got my perspective and I've heard perspective from other people on the council as well as other department heads. I just haven't heard the perspective from anyone that's in the, in the marijuana industry yet. So.
Sure. Sure, absolutely. So the community impact fee was established, I believe, back in 2017. Don't quote me on that. However, its intent was to have operators take some ownership if the city is required to have, if they're impacted at all, whether that's police, fire departments, any city services that are needed. They wanted owners to take more responsibility and be able to, to help supplement any impact that would affect the community in a negative, in a negative fashion. That's the short version, if that's helpful.
Thank you. That wasn't the definition that I was told in the beginning when like the organizing first started, but thank you for clarifying that.
I just have a question. Is your application impacted by the buffer issue other than the 200 feet at all?
No, it is not.
Okay, thank you. Just checking. Any other questions? If not, I'm ready to entertain a motion. Who is it? Oh, okay. Holy Oak Cannabis wishes to be heard?
Yes, thank you for, I, I would like to address the impact fee because the question was asked for operators and obviously I own a holy, I own Holy Oak Cannabis. And my understanding.
Can you just give us your name and address, please?
Yes, please, please. It's James Jaren and I am the owner of Holy Oak Cannabis in Holy Oak. And I live on 188 Brookshire Ave in Southwick, Massachusetts.
Thanks.
No problem. In regard to the impact fee, the question was asked of what, what, what was it all about and what did it mean? And I just wanted to address that personally. The 3% was basically created, like my colleague mentioned here, was to take care of any expenses that the city had. And they were allowed to take up to 3% of this impact fee. And the, my understanding is that the impact fee is only supposed to be applied directly to the impact in which the particular establishment creates on the city. So I just wanted to give you guys my interpretation because right now there is a lot of, a lot of legal stuff happening out there with cities and municipalities. Like the city of North Hampton basically waived that fee because they really couldn't establish how it particularly impacted a particular store in Lee, Massachusetts and several other places. So I just wanted to throw in my two cents of my understanding of the impact fee so I can help the council people understand what it's all about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question on that?
Sure.
Yeah, yeah, I, I would just put the invitation out to any, because it's a great question, is if anybody wants to submit anything by way of communications to the city council to share with us, you know, things you've read, industry journals, things in Massachusetts, your, your opinions, your take on the law, send that type of information to us because we're kind of really getting into, now that we're getting our arms around these dollars and how they're being spent potentially and thinking about how we're planning, your perspective would be an important one to make sure that we consider that as we kind of try and reach out to make sure the community is heard, operators are heard, you know. Overall, we want to make sure we, we hear from everybody and that's, that's good guidance. I, I thank Mr., I believe it's Mr. Garen as well as Ms. Adams, their perspectives on it. Thank you.
I don't, I don't, I don't think I'm muted at this point. Thank you very much, Councilman, for that invite. We have tried to reach out to council and many people in the city told us it wasn't under your authority to decide what happens with this money. So I will take you up on your invitation and give you my interpretation of this impact.
Oh, yeah. Well, as. Oh, yeah, well, as, as you'll come to find out, and let me dissuade whoever told you that, that all the money, because by the way, just so you know, some of the inside baseball, that originally they didn't realize this had to go into its own individual stabilization fund. So I'll tell you that first of all. And those stabilization funds are a creature of state statute and heavily regulated. And it requires a two-thirds vote of the city council to approve any money in or out of a stabilization account. My understanding, however, is that relative to the cannabis ones, they're allowing the money to go directly into the stabilization fund, but only the council by a two-third vote can take the money out of this account. So therefore, as a matter of fact, we had a request the other night and the council didn't vote for it. So you're at ground zero right here as to what happens with this money. So your opinion would be very much appreciated.
Thank you very much, sir.
And before I entertain a motion, I just want to confirm with the Hybrid House folks that you don't have a letter from DPW that relates to anything to your application, do you?
We do not have a letter or note. Originally, we met with them and they had some comments and we addressed those comments. They were pretty informal. They were through via email. But they did not-
Because you're not really doing anything that caused them to weigh in on the property, right? If I'm remembering your review correctly?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Motion if the committee's ready.
Anybody else who wants to like to say anything?
I don't see any hands.
I'll make a motion to close the- Excuse me, I'll make a-
Let me just be sure. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak on this special permit? I don't think there is, but if the one time I don't ask, there will be, if I forget. Okay, not seeing any. Now I can entertain a-
All right, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
All in favor?
I'll make a motion to grant the special permit and I believe we have a standard set of conditions.
We do, and I will read the conditions into the record so that the applicant can let us know if those are agreeable. One, that the owner of the building always pay the commercial property tax rate to the extent allowed by federal, state and local laws for the duration of the special permit. Two, that the business retains a minimum 30% Holyoke residents for non-security jobs. Three, that the hiring preference be given to security personnel that are retired Holyoke police or a retired member of another police department that now lives in the city of Holyoke. Four, that there shall be no marijuana consumption allowed on site. Five, that the hours of operation be set according to city ordinances. Six, that the applicant must abide by Massachusetts general laws and guidance from the Cannabis Control Commission. And seven, that the petitioner applicant shall conform with city and state health laws, rules and regulations, including odor nuisance controls for the duration of the permit. I'm not seeing any other separate letters that need to be added as a condition. So those would be the seven conditions on this special permit if granted.
Does Ms. Adams have an opinion on anything?
Do those all sound familiar? I think all the applicants are pretty familiar with these now.
That's our standard seven, but-
Yeah. Does the applicant wish to?
We do not have any issues with the conditions of the special permit. And I don't want to speak preemptively, but thank you very much.
You're welcome. So I'll make a motion to grant their special permit with those seven standard conditions and that'll be that.
And we have a second. All in favor? Any opposed?
Good luck.
So it's five zero.
Yep.
Thank you.
Good luck and welcome to-
This will be sent to the next city council meeting.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
Good night.
Make a motion to, item number nine, and for Green Grab, make a motion to take that off the table and open the public hearing.
All in favor? Aye.
You want to come in and sit down?
You can sit if you like.
Or you, you know, it might be more convenient. Just make sure you turn the microphones on.
Yeah, make sure the green light is on and it's close enough to be heard. So item nine is a public hearing for a special permit application of Green Grab Inc. at 620 Bolio Street to operate a marijuana establishment for marijuana cultivation, product manufacturing and delivery. Welcome.
Thank you for having us. My name's Marvin Cable. I'm an attorney from North Hampton. I helped draft the special permit along with the engineers and help of everybody. Sitting to my left is John Muse, one of the owners. And on Zoom is Odalis Brenton, who's actually the social applicant, or social equity applicant that helped put this through. So really for this special permit is a marijuana delivery operator. I'm not sure how the other aspects got onto the agenda tonight, but, but there will be cultivation and retail there eventually. We just had thought that separating the special permits out since they're separate businesses made the most sense because back in April when we started all this last year, there's issues with MDO and the other issues. So there will be eventually cultivation and retail there. But for tonight, for Green Grab, MDO marijuana delivery operator is the main gig here. So just a little bit about marijuana delivery operator. This is a new license and it's only for so- social equity applicants. And in fact, this applicant themselves were the first in the state to be provisionally approved. And by social equity applicant, this, this is supposed to be a license to help ameliorate the drug war type of license. And again, this was the first in the state and really the only holdup is the special permit. And that's why we are sitting here tonight and we hope we have everything for you. So please let me know what we can address. And again, Odalis is up on Zoom, who probably knows a lot of the technicals, and John is here, who's judge a lot of the-
Okay, so this is the first time we're taking this up. So what typically we have is the applicant just walk us through as we're reviewing it, just walk us through your application.
Sure. So you have the application, I believe, in front of you.
We do, we do. What we don't have yet is anything from planning.
Okay.
Okay, just so you know.
That makes sense. So in going through it, again, you know, I gave you kind of like an introduction overview. That was kind of the first page there. And then I went through the owners, John and Odalis, who's sitting there in a tie. I don't think I've ever seen you in a tie, Odalis, but a good time to wear one. And again, this is the first provisionally approved application. All the technical documents should be there towards the end of the application. We spent a lot of time to get this right, actually, with Hayes Engineering and several architects. But the lease showing site control is there. The notarized statement of representatives is there. We also put in a detailed description of activities on the site because this is kind of a new thing. You know, delivery. And essentially what this is, is a truck that leaves a facility to deliver cannabis to people in other places, other cities and towns. Obviously, there's certain restrictions. You can't deliver to people under the age of 21. You can't deliver to people in universities. CCC is very strict. You can't have more than $10,000 of product in a vehicle at any time. There's two operators, one in the passenger seat, one driving. There is a dispatcher, which is actually three people at that time. There is, I'd also tell you, a link that goes back and forth, a live link via video feed. This is, this is required actually by the CCC at all times. So this is what I'm trying to say, is it's a heavily regulated, like, area and there's a lot of security involved. But most of the activity will be occurring outside the borders of Holyoke, actually. And in terms of logistics, in terms of vehicles coming back and forth, I'm sure Odalis could speak more to that. But there wouldn't be the ability for vans to come back and forth all the time because it just wouldn't make sense monetarily wise. So you would see maybe a van leave once or twice, a couple of times a day, and that's it. Just because that's how that would work. But again, the description of activities is there in narrative form. We also had the chief of police review the security details. Odalis, again, this is actually one of his specialties and John too. John is a licensed security, I guess, provider by the state of Massachusetts. So this, the security plan has been reviewed by Holyoke.
Do you have the letter from?
Yep, it is up there. That is page 17 on the application.
Getting there.
Yeah, sorry. I'm skipping through and I'm just trying to give you a broad overview and please stop me.
No, that's fine.
If I am not, if I'm going too fast for you.
You're fine.
We also put in a development impact statement and demands that go on the city, going back to the host community agreement. And, you know, it also talks about, you know, economic benefits of this project, including jobs and good jobs. And John's a good boss, I would say, too. So we put that in there and I'm not sure how familiar you are with the application. If you want me to go through the narratives themselves.
Well, we need, since this is the first of this sort, more is better than less.
Sure. Okay. So I guess the details too, you know, because I'm just a lawyer, right? I'm the guy that looks at the law. Odalis could speak to the details. If you want to get into that, do you want it, do you want that before going into traffic impact statements and?
Well, I think we can go whichever way you want. If you want to get through like sort of the technical part first and then we'll get into the details of the operation.
I think so.
That's fine.
Sure. So I think in going through the special permit itself, I'll keep it organized.
All right, but I just want to be sure because I don't see the zone on the first page. You are in the IG zone?
We, yes, yes.
All right, I just wanted to be sure.
Yeah, definitely located in the IG zone. It's 620 Bolio, Bolio. Yeah, and it's near haze and paper. Is that a good indicator? Four brothers.
Gotcha.
Don't forget to turn your mic on.
And one of the advantages of location, that's John, sorry. And one of the advantages of the location, obviously, is 391 being right there and being a delivery service. So in going back, I'm trying to see where a good part to start would be, because I want to go through kind of the narrative. Odalis, can you kind of take us through what like a day to day would look like with an marijuana delivery operator, more so in the delivery side, not so much in like the packing of products? Because that's generic.
If you could do a screen share, I do have some type of presentation put together that kind of shows the flow of how it would work from a customer standpoint. Let's see. I mean, I could begin with the technology to kind of get you an understanding how customers would register. The customers would essentially either go to our website or to our application, sign up. They would have to go through a typical information process and include, upload some documents supporting their proof of age and stuff like that. So all that information will be used within the system to cross-reference upon deliveries. But to break down what the delivery process will look like, I'll go to a flow chart. Oh, sorry, I skipped that. Hold on a second, I do apologize. Here. All right, so the flow chart, the customer will place the order. Once the dispatchers receive that order, they will have it in a set schedule. Once it's set scheduled, the next day of or whenever the schedule is assigned for, it'll be assigned to a delivery team because each vehicle requires two delivery agents. Once those delivery agents pick up the orders, they would then go en route. Once they arrive, one of the drivers will maintain in the vehicle at all times. The secondary delivery agent will exit the vehicle, interact with the customers while having body camera recording the whole transaction. And then they also have redesigned logistics software that goes on a handheld device that allows them to cross-reference the information that was submitted throughout the profile setup. And the final step of the whole process is to actually take a scan of the front and back of the ID to just set records on our behalf to have evidence of proof of age and ID and verification. And they will leave at a scheduled basis. So pretty much all the orders coming in overnight or during the day will be scheduled for any time during the week based on the liking of the customer.
So can I ask a question? Will you be delivering medical marijuana as well as recreational marijuana?
Right now, we currently, we have the ability to do both, but we're currently focusing on the recreational side of things just to get, because it's a brighter audience. So it'll be easier for us to expand at that point.
Well, I just want to make you aware that I recently had a communication from one of our residents. And you may or may not be aware, but the first thing that we wrote laws for in Holyoke were the medical marijuana. And Holyoke is essentially the only city who does not offer retail medical marijuana. How ironic is that when we've issued the most special permits of any city in the state? So I'm hoping for the folks that really have the medical need that somehow we're going to be able to, you know, make it possible. Yeah.
Yeah, it's interesting. It's interesting because actually I talked about this today with another group. The products for medical now are looking very much like the products for adult use. And while, you know, you can label them and package them differently, they are very much the same and even many times grown in the same exact facility. The difference really being is that, you know, the labeling and the dosages from the doctors.
Right, right. And I imagine for the consumer, there may be a payment mechanism for the medical that's not available for the recreational, right?
That's right, right.
So I just hope, you know, it's just, to me, problematic that we don't have it for the people with the medical.
Right, and I, that could, you know, the-
Not that it's on you, but-
Also, you know, this service enables people who don't have access to cannabis access. You know, nursing homes, I hate to say it, might be a big customer, but they can't get out, obviously. So this might actually provide access to a lot of people who don't have it. And yes, I think medical-
That's why I put that question out there. But so it's on your list.
It is on the list. It is, it's, it's an additional hurdle that needs to, but it's not so much, it's not far-fetched hurdle.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, of course.
I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Oh, and you didn't interrupt. And we're just, so we're on, going through the special permit. We're at the description of activities on the site. And I was hoping that Odalis would provide a good overview and I hope that did. And please let me know if you have any questions on that. And going through it still, I'm looking at page 16. We did have this approved by the chief of police. We provided some security details in this document, obviously not our entire security. Plan is going to be in there. The development impact statement, obviously, is, you know, we want to project that we're going to be bringing in money. So we're going to say that and we think we will. This, I believe, this industry, delivery, has the ability to take over retail just because of the convenience. However, there's a lot of financial issues, gas, obviously, being one of them. The fact that you need a passenger, you need a passenger employee and a driver and dispatcher plus everything else makes it cost prohibitive to sell cannabis sometimes. But I do believe this has the ability to take over and be the industry, especially since this industry can white label. I don't know if you guys are familiar with that. But this essentially means that we can take products, change the label and make our own brand. So there's a lot, there's a lot to this, too. And this also on the flip side of things, this provides access of brands that some people can't get. So like maybe there's a cultivator on Cape Cod, right? Now, because it's being delivered, there's more access to this, this brand, this type of product. So this could be the up and coming, you know, industry or license. Do you guys have questions about the developmental impact? You know, I guess that's one of your major, probably.
Well, my first questions were, and I know I don't want you to go into the security plan, but that's kind of the first thing that came into my mind if you're driving around
Sure.
with a lot of known, and I mean, people will know who you are and have all these, you know, we have- we have a few issues in the city relative to drugs and gangs and et cetera. And so I imagine it has to be a fairly unique security plan, given that you're delivering, compared to the standard ones of a manufacturing entity.
That's right. So there's a whole list of plans. In fact, I'm certified by the Campus Control Commission to train people, one of twelve, to train. And there's a whole delivery curriculum that's aside for delivery services. One thing that's a deterrent, maybe it's not, but is there's only $10,000 worth of product allowed in a vehicle at any time. That's actually bad for us because it's, that's not actually that much when you're delivering a whole day worth. You know, some people might order $500 worth at a time because they're trying to order, right? So $10,000 is the max. There's no guns allowed. That's unique to this industry and that there's a prohibition on firearms, but there's no firearms allowed in vehicles. Which is interesting.
So what if?
What if something?
What if somebody has a gun that stops your truck?
There's a problem. So there's workarounds, but I've never seen anybody use them. Workarounds that have been theorized have been like, let's have some, a follow vehicle with guns. I've not seen anybody do that, but.
But is your driver allowed to say have mace or something?
Yes.
Some defense of some sort?
So there's panic buttons, there's electronic.
Oh, okay, so.
So there's, every, so often there's pings that go back and forth electronically. And Audalas had set that up. In fact, it's required by the regulations. It's a two-way kind of radio and there's GPS tracking on the vans too. But these are not so much deterrents as reactive types of means. But that, but that's all that the CCC would allow for.
Interesting.
We did, we did add in some additional functionality to some of their stuff to kind of add some more security features to the drivers. One of them being the handheld device that we actually give them. It's a unique device. It's similar to what the police officers use now as two-way communicators. But in addition to that, it has a panic button that pings the actual location outside of the vehicle. And also within the body camera, we configured a panic button that will initiate a video and audio stream under emergency circumstances. So that will give us visual and audio of what's actually going on at the situation. And the same thing for the delivery vehicle as well. They all outfitted with panic buttons. We'd be able to live stream any events. If there's anything that's happening, we can actually report, our dispatchers can report from our end to kind of ensure safety to the drivers as well. So those are additional things that we added that we felt like is necessary for this type of business.
So, and just to follow up on that, so are the trucks sort of innocuous? I mean, you're not going to be like green grab.
Unmarked vehicles, everybody is identified, their address has to be identified and confirmed in the registration process. And then, you know, we're not, we're not driving to an unknown location. We already know who we're looking for, you know, who we're supposed to meet. And he's created some, some, some technology that will allow us to confirm their identity before turning over the products. Also, we're working on a cashless system which will remove 50% of the risk because either it's a high valued product or it's the cash. So that will also help to deter, you know, any undesirable actors in that situation. But the key component is identifying the people and the location that we're going to. And then, of course, you know, at the last minute, if they don't feel comfortable, then the sale is, is, is not going to take place.
Walk away.
Driving away. Safety is paramount. You know, we do feel like the two, the two, you know, the two agents may be excessive, but in, you know, an ounce of prevention is better than a pound of cure. You know, FedEx delivers a lot of high value products with, driver UPS does the same. And their loss, you know, is usually done in the warehouse, not, not at gunpoint at the point of delivery, so.
Right. Yes. And you wanted to talk about the development impact?
If you do.
Well, I'm, I'm interested.
I just have one question about, he mentioned earlier about ameliorate drug war. Could you elaborate on that exactly as to what that means?
Sure. So, you know, part of legalizing cannabis was to stop arrests from happening disproportionately to people of color or people of means that couldn't afford legal counsel, right? And this is one of the ways that the Cannabis Control Commission has decided to ameliorate that was to give a monopoly to certain groups who have been harmed by the drug war for three years. And Audalas is certified by the Cannabis Control Commission as a social equity applicant, which is actually a pretty rigorous process. You have to fit a certain category of.
Do you have to be a victim of the war on drugs?
Of sorts. And this is defined and this has been debated, like this is one of the reasons why it became.
I asked because I kind of, I kind of served five years for selling marijuana, like literally delivery driver all over the city.
Talk to me afterwards.
Nah, that was the main thing. That was the main thing. Yeah. So, no, I don't. Apparently it doesn't work for me.
And unfortunately, these programs have not been working, really, in my opinion. And I, and it's shared by many, almost majority of everybody in the industry. This program, excuse me, has not been working. And so we're trying really to take as much as we can from MDOs, from other licenses. So we're hoping you guys give us that opportunity to, because there's not much in this industry. Because it's, it's, it's held on by corporate power, really.
It's a big money industry. Let's face it.
Goliath kind of situation, man.
That's right. And other states, you know, look at Massachusetts and they're actually one-upping us even more. They're putting like more monopolies on different license types because they're hoping that that helps. But really, no MDOs are in, are in existence right now, right? Not one. And this has been out for a while. We were hoping to be a first. It still might be. But it, does that answer your question a little bit? It's not, it doesn't, it doesn't ameliorate the drug war.
There you go. Thank you. That's, that's where it's at.
There's no answer to this and I think.
There is an answer, but it's not in this room.
It's actually kind of sad. To me, it's sad that this.
It's not in this room, it's at the Cannabis Commission.
Be a lot more done, frankly. As a lawyer, because I actually started out as a cannabis lawyer defending people, getting people out of jail for cannabis crimes and a lot in Holyoke too. And I really don't think this even touches helping, but at least tries to.
And it's not a monopoly, it's, it's a three-year exclusive use.
It's.
When, you know.
And part of the.
Which is, is, is better than nothing. And we're trying to, to get it going. The sooner we open, the sooner we'll be able to, you know, generate routes that will be accessible to everybody. Similar to, you know, what he was saying is if you had a product in Western Mass that is desired in Gloucester, nobody's driving from Gloucester to get it probably, but we will deliver it to their home. And that makes it so convenient. There's also a discretionary factor in the delivery that people may not want other people to know what they do in their private lives. And so we think those are the advantages of this business. And then there's risks associated with, with it, which have been mitigated by the two-agent persons. That also has, maybe deteriorates or cuts into the profitability of this particular exclusive opportunity. But, you know, there are ways, the app-based platform that Audalas has designed really gives us the advantage of a platform that we can offer everyone's products to any place in the state of Massachusetts. And that I think is, you know, our, our advantage.
So for the development impacts, what, what would you see with that? Like, are you talking about number of vehicles or what would you share with us?
It's, it's not, it's nowhere near what a retail is going to be, first of all, right? Because you don't have individual customers coming in. So really, you're going to have several vehicles entering and leaving a day, which is pretty minimal.
How many do you think?
To start, probably just two vehicles, one doing same-day deliveries and one doing routes, which the route, you know, will be, will be, you know, basically set up by the app and the dispatcher.
So two vans?
Two vans, and they won't even be vans, they'll probably be, you know, SUVs or maybe hybrids.
Because you're not carrying all that much.
Right. And cannabis, you know, a hundred pounds probably fits in, you know.
Vehicles that are good on gas, right?
You know, it's, it's small quantities and we're not delivering a hundred pounds at a time. It's very small retail, you know, personal use. So, so two vehicles leave, one may come back and forth. And then, you know, the employees, they arrive at seven AM and they leave at, you know, five PM or four PM. So it's, it's, you know, like he said, not as high of an impact as a retail establishment.
And I saw the hours are eight o'clock to nine, eight in the morning to nine at night.
Yeah, that's state regulations. We can't get past that.
Yeah, well.
Makes sense, right?
Yeah, makes sense.
Seven days a week or?
It would be seven days.
Seven days.
No, I mean, I just want to, I know people have been asking. So I lived in Cali for a couple of months and the delivery there is very, very different where it's just order and someone shows up, college student. Yeah, pretty much delivered right to your door if you wanted to. So, I mean, I don't, I don't know, disappointed is not the right word. I just, I think, when I was hearing about, and there's nothing y'all can do, because I know this is from the CCC and all that, but like.
You're a fanatic, I was going to say.
Well, I heard about the MDO and it was excited, like especially when it was to help the social equity candidates. But then it just turns out, I mean, we have a second driver, we have the dispatcher, we have all the security stuff, which, yes, I guess, but also it doesn't seem like very a low input or low cost for people. But that's just my opinion, but I'm excited to have this in our city.
Yeah. And part of the problem with that too is we feel like they're going to take away those requirements because they're going to find it's very unprofitable. And then that three-year mark comes up and all of a sudden, everybody can get into the market and we've lost our hold. That's the concern by a lot of people.
Well, hopefully you have your market captured.
That's, that's our goal. Within three years is our.
But, so will you be delivering to homes in Holyoke also though?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
There's some, some cities that have moratoriums that we will not be allowed to deliver to those particular zip codes. But it's all in geo-tracking of the, the app that Audalas has created.
Councillor Day.
I wanted just to understand the applicant, sort of the players here a little bit better, just so I understand all the relationships. I saw Jim Sagelin's name. He's a name familiar to Holyoke. And he purports to be the general partner of the landlord. Who, who is the landlord?
He is the, he is the landlord.
Does he have a business? He's a general partner, but like, what's the name of the company that's the actual landlord?
Well, the, the.
Jarvis. I think it's Jarvis.
What, what is it?
It might be just.
Jarry Associates.
There you go.
Here, right?
Page ten, if you take.
Is it on page?
You must have.
All right, let me go here.
Something.
It's, yeah.
Is it page four?
Page ten.
Site controls.
Why am I not seeing that name pop? I see his name, but where's the?
Landlord Jarry Associates on page ten.
Ten?
Right above the signature.
Page ten?
Oh, there it is. Jarry Associates. Okay, thank you. All right, so he's the landlord. You're renting from him and then you're subleasing to Audalas.
Yes.
And Audalas is actually running the business. Are you involved in the business?
I am.
Okay. So you're kind of like sub-leser of the property?
Cable Property Services is a company that I own. That's who we initiated the lease with Jim for the entire property.
Okay.
Then we've subleased various sections and one of the sections is to green grab. This was all by design. Audalas and I are partners. He's a 51% equity owner, I'm 49%.
Okay.
Both will be, you know, we both have been investing heavily in this and we'll be operating it together.
Okay.
You know, as, as well as, you know, the other businesses.
Okay. And then your goal, like this is sort of like division one and then down the road, you want to do these other things. But you'll come into us down the road whenever that's ready to go forward.
Correct.
Okay.
So there is, like, like he had mentioned, there's cultivation.
Which will be a separate applicant.
Right. But the entry fee to that is a little bit more significant than, you know, than this one. And we're already, you know, we're.
Yeah, you want to get this off the ground and.
Maybe get some money.
Some cash flow coming in. Yeah, absolutely. Okay, great. All right. I think I'm starting to understand the players here a little better.
We're trying to do it incrementally.
Sure, that makes sense.
And, and forward.
Yep.
And we think that's the smartest, you know, play for us. We're not, we're not the big corporate company that came.
Yeah, just a couple of local guys.
Local guys.
Yeah, you're, he's from Springfield. I think you're from Ludlow or whatever.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, nice, okay.
I'm from Springfield too. I've been in Springfield a lot of years now. I'm originally from the Boston area, but I'm a transplant for about thirty. I own a, a security company that worked heavily in Springfield.
Oh, okay.
Early nineties in the flats, South Holyoke, Jarvis, Sargent and West, all of the high crime areas. This was during, I think it was safe neighborhood grants were offered to like Markin and Wayva and all these places. And they hired us because we were very effective in places that a lot of companies didn't want to, didn't want to go. And so we took, you know, I have a personal interest in, in, in Holyoke and a family that lives here. I think that I've always done very well from a business standpoint. That's why when we were looking for locations, Holyoke was, you know, was arms wide open for cannabis at the time.
Right.
And so it just seemed like a perfect fit for, you know, for my investment because, you know, Holyoke has always, always kind of done very well by me and.
And in the early days, the marijuana folks came in and they said they thought it would be a good synergy for the people to be located near each other for the development of the business. So it seems like that's working out in that area, huh?
Yeah. Yeah, we have a lot of good relationships with the, the, the community, the cannabis community as well.
As well as the community community.
A few, you know, staff who, they didn't have the language in the ordinance for delivery that delayed us a few months.
Right.
Then we got our ordinance, we got our HCA finally. But when we were submitting our permitting papers, they go on summer holiday. We ended up having a cannabis festival at the property because it wasn't licensed at the time. So we, we didn't have to worry about consumption or all that. We hired a lot of Holyoke police officers. They loved it, fire department. The community seemed to love that. It was a way of us kind of embracing the culture as well as the investment in the business opportunity. And we're trying to put that together somewhere in Holyoke, a second annual and make it, you know, kind of a trademark of Holyoke, not necessarily, you know, us.
Right.
Sponsor it as long as we can.
Now, do you get the product from local companies or do you get it from national, like whoever you can get the best deal from to like as a reseller? Or like, how does that?
That would be illegal, but we'll, we'll try to source it locally and we already have some letters of intent from companies that are local. You know, there's, there's some people that we have relationships with as neighbors right next door that, that have already talked to us about putting, white labeling their product on our platform. Some people want, you know, they want to be on the top tier. They want to be the highest quality product offered on our platform. Cartridges, which are like the vapes and edibles, people want to offer on our platform. Because if you're manufacturing things in Western Mass or in the Berkshires, yeah, you may get some people from Albany driving in and Worcester County, but that Gloucester, that Cape Cod market, they're not coming that far. Even the South Shore is three hours from here, you know, to New Bedford. So we have that, that full access. So that's, it'll mostly come from local. That's what the whole cannabis community is, to build that relationship with Trulieve and the Harlem Collective.
Let me ask you a question on delivery. Can you do, does it have to be a delivery to like a home or a business? You can't say, yeah, meet me up at the McDonald's on the Mass Pike and I'll meet you halfway because I'm coming from the Cape. Can you do that type of stuff and do a transaction in the parking lot?
I'm not sure.
Yeah. It's got to be a verified location. They have to go through the vetting process through our software. Our customer service agents will actually, like when they register, it stays, it stands in a queue. And then our customer service representative will go over all the information that they submitted, confirm it and then list those addresses as the addresses they will use for delivery.
Okay.
It's part of the safety measure. So it'll be like typically a house and stuff like that, you know?
Yeah, I was just wondering if somebody said, boy, I'm awfully tempted, you know, I live, there's no delivery around me. You know, meet me halfway on the Mass Pike or something type of thing.
I would save us some money on gas, but we can't do it though.
I should also say, you know, CCC also has a rule that you can't change your delivery mid-route. So, which is kind of strange. So that means if the truck's out and there wants to be changes in the delivery, it cannot be changed. Yeah. Until the truck goes all the way back and packages and does whatever. And I was kind of, yes.
The customer service and the app would probably encourage them to place a second order or do something.
Cancel the first order and do a second.
Let the first order continue and, and then have the second order because they may just want an add-on.
Oh, I see. Okay.
And things like.
Interesting.
Handle it.
Um, now, do you guys have to pay an impact fee like the other?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So you're involved in that as well.
Yeah, we also have a very, a very strong plan.
Positive impact plan.
Positive impact.
Oh, okay.
We wanna help uh the, the kids in, in the community learn about financial um literacy.
Oh, okay.
My experience working in Holyoke is.
I love financial literacy. In fact, I loved it so much, I filed an order to do just that. So that's, that's a great thing that you're.
So we just feel like the, the kids sometimes value the wrong things for whatever reason. And if we teach them and, you know, maybe they won't hear it from me, maybe they'll hear it from Odalis or somebody that we
Yeah.
hire and train. Um, you know, all you have to do is plant the seed and it could, you know, could be sixteen, eighteen, twenty-four, thirty-four, it clicks.
That's right.
And it doesn't click if you don't hear the information. You never know. You just do what everyone else did, the way everyone else did, and you get what everyone else got. And so it's a, uh, you know, it's not in Holyoke exclusively. This is in, in Lynn Lawrence Lowell.
Sure.
Boston.
That's awesome.
Very mad and in Dorchester. And we feel that that is, it is probably our very best way to do the most good. Which is, is kind of why, you know, Odalis and I are interested in this. It's, it's probably our very best opportunity, right, to, to make as much uh, you know, financial gains as, as possible, even though things have been very good for me. But the more you make, the more good you can do.
That's right.
Share with the community. And, and so this is, these are like the principles that we're trying to bring to this cannabis. Not this, um, you know, the corporate grab, which, you know, that we trying to sell it off as soon as it's saturated and, and you know, that's why we hope that we get our, our, you know, our local guys opportunity in a place that, you know, needs it the most.
Do you see it? I don't see any hands.
Okay, cool.
All right. Any other questions from folks? So I imagine you've sent your application over to planning. And we hope that we'll hear from them soon. Because it, it's a pretty straightforward application from what I've seen.
Once, once we tried to submit um when they came back from the summer, the summer break, there was a whole new set of things that they wanted that we just.
Oh, for, from the.
Right, right.
From the planning. So we, we went and did, you know, more engineering, more uh, more um architectural
Oh, okay.
design, just so that we had every single thing that they were looking for updated, including, you know, traffic impact statements. Uh, they wanted to make sure that it was an updated um survey, not, not something that was, you know, done months and months or years ago.
Okay.
We think that we've done, we've been ver- very thorough with.
Now, was that very recently or a while ago?
No, very recent.
Oh, okay, okay. So we should be anticipating a letter from them in the next couple of weeks, maybe then.
Yeah, maybe, maybe sooner. And, and will it go that you guys vote uh without us being here or at the next meeting or?
Um, we could. Um, it, or if you wanted to come in on Zoom, if there were some other questions that came up between now and then.
Absolutely.
You probably wanna be here for the next, just in case something.
Be sure that, you know, nothing unanticipated.
Yeah, we're not going anywhere. We, we've been dying for this. And, and getting the opportunity to be live with you guys is, is.
It's so much easier than on the screen and the Zoom and the hands.
Yes, yes, agreed.
People to people. I like that better.
Madam Chair, I, I think unless there's something else, we probably should table it.
Chair vacant. There is a hand up.
There is. Oh, okay. Is it somebody from the public?
It's uh Holyoke Cannabis again.
Oh, okay. And also I just wanna make sure I do the ask if there's anybody from the public who wishes to comment on this application. But in the meantime.
I see Ruth's here.
Oh, okay. You can come to the mic and speak and then after our person in the audience speaks, I will recognize Holyoke Cannabis.
There's a button on there on the top, Ruth.
Here.
Hello.
Hi, Ruth Garcia, two five three Essex in Holyoke. Um, I'm not trying to be mean or anything, but when you guys were talking about the delivery guys and not having guns or anything like that, I'm saying this in the perspective that I have lived both sides and, you know, um, regular and also certain situations in the street. Um, people in the street, when they have the idea that they can easily infiltrate themselves somewhere, they will rob you. You know, and this is reality. Uh, uh, um, alert button, I have work in places that I've got those. And sometimes it's a little too late for some stuff. And I'm not saying that it's a bad idea. You wanna keep safety at all times, but at the same time, there's also room for some type of error somewhere. And if you have two people in the van, to me, one of them should be carried gone because you never know. We can, we, one person trying to get you, it could be more. I'm just saying in a tough neighborhood, you know, we have a good places here in Holyoke, but we also have people that have a mentality that, you know, roam around those ideas, just saying.
Thank you. Holyoke Cannabis.
Yes, um, Madam Chair, this is to you. Um, I'm very familiar. Obviously, I'm in the cannabis industry about the home delivery. What I'm a little confused about is that the home delivery companies, and I know the regulations very well, they pick up the cannabis from the dispensary. And if there's any deliveries that have not been delivered, they have to come back to the dispensary and bring back the products. Therefore, there is absolutely no products that actually come into the deliveries facility and, and please verify that uh through the chair. So uh, my understanding is, and I wanna make sure that the committee really looks into if a home delivery actually needs a special permit because they're just an office and they have a delivery vehicle. So they don't need a Sally Port. They're not, uh, they're not actually stashing any of the cannabis in their facility and whatnot. And as Holyoke Cannabis, and again, I recognize my name is James Jerran one eighty-eight Brookshire Ave, because I know it's a new topic uh for, just for uh protocol. My understanding is I can use any delivery company from anywhere to deliver my product. So I'm really not sure that a delivery, home delivery, and it wasn't on the agenda as home delivery, needs a special permit because they don't have any cannabis and all the stores they are picking up from have special permits and Sally Port. So I just wanted to be clear that um, again, uh, my personal opinion is that home delivery does not need a special permit besides just the business because they're just an office. No cannabis.
I can address this. So I think there's some confusion. There's multiple delivery licenses. So I think you're speaking of the courier business model. Um, which is a different business model. Uh, this is a marijuana delivery operator, which is a different license altogether. Uh, there is not just an office. Uh, there's a warehouse, uh, there's white labeling.
Have products.
Yeah, there's products.
That's, you're absolutely right. I thank you for that interjection. Now, I understood this was just a home delivery. So if this is a carrier where you're allowed to store, I apologize and I withdraw my question. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so um, at this point, I think if we continue to April twenty-sixth, that should give planning time to get the letter to us. So we'll have it for our consideration by then. And then we would be able to give it to the council for the first meeting in May if all goes as hoped.
Yeah.
Does that sound like?
And I'm sure that I would hope they would share with that letter with you before our meeting. So you'd be able to answer it.
Any, hopefully if there's anything open, that'll be all back and forth done.
Thank you, yeah. We've been in touch with Jeff and the planning department very much so. So most things should be addressed. Uh, but yeah, obviously it'd be nice to have that. And thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
We really appreciate being here.
Yeah, take care now.
To all entertain the motion?
Should we, is it a motion to table or a motion to continue?
It's a motion to continue the public.
That's what I thought, yeah.
April twenty-sixth.
All right, I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing until April twenty-sixth at six thirty.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, six thirty doesn't mean six thirty.
Could be uh ten thirty, you know?
Thank you.
We'll see ya.
Okay, continued. Okay, so let's go back.
No, did number ten ever end up showing up? Uh, River Grove?
Well.
Or the other one?
Number seven never showed up as far as I know, and they were a continuation.
Oh, River Grove is here. Okay.
Eight seventy-six, Grow?
No, River Grove is four seventy-five Canal. Number, item number ten.
But I'm, I'm just, I'm trying to keep track of the agenda here, just.
Seven's a no-show and one was a no-show. One and seven were MIA.
Right, so one is tabled and can remain tabled, but seven, if they're not here, would need to be continued. I just wanna, I just don't wanna lose
Oh, okay.
all of the agenda.
All right. To continue the public hearing until April twenty-sixth at six thirty?
Yeah.
For item seven.
Yep. I'll second that.
I think we, okay, so just to be correct, I think we have to open the public hearing for item seven and then continue it.
All right, I'll make a motion to remove item seven from the table and open the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Then your motion.
So a motion to continue the public hearing for item seven until April twenty-sixth at six thirty.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That way it keeps their thing alive.
Gotcha.
I, I just, I think they're waiting on planning.
Yeah, but they should have said something then.
Well, well, but planning communicated to me that they hadn't gotten back to somebody. At this point, I'm sorry.
So we know River, we know River Grove is here, item ten. What about eleven? Are they here? WTM?
So we should go to item ten.
They're, they're, oh, they are here. Okay.
Okay.
Wow. I mean, we're, we're a ten twenty here, huh? Where, and we still have two power public hearings?
Well, um, twelve will be continued. There's nothing on it. And thirteen's a
We may want it.
handicap. Well, we've been trying to get out of twenty twenty-one and a lot of them were backed up because of that other stuff. That's why. Well, we can have more meetings.
Less items and we just take longer, that's all.
Well, that would be true too. We're still in twenty twenty-one and it's the end of March. So can we take up item ten? We're wasting.
Motion to take up item ten off the table and open up up the public hearing.
Is there a second? All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Yeah, I, I'm, I, I, I'm the public here. I am gonna though make an objection, again, on behalf of my constituents. You know, how real is a public hearing when it's being held at ten thirty at night?
No, I take your.
And so, and then we got another one. So um, I, if I'm a citizen, I'm expected to come down here at midnight with a mattress and a pillow? I mean, that's not a real public hearing in my opinion. I don't think justice is served in that fashion.
Well, I take your point, but I'd like to give the applicants the opportunity to do their overview because we will be continuing these to, you know, a future date and be hearing from planning as well.
Fair, fair enough.
So I just, in fairness to the applicants, while some, you know, items two and three took a long time.
Madam Chair, I agree with the fairness of the applicants, but it's fairness to us and our own self-health too at the same time, just saying. I have two kids at home. I have four, I have a two, two-year-old and a four-month-old and my wife is by herself.
Yeah.
Um, no disrespect. I know I, what I signed up for the job and all the other stuff, but.
Yeah, but you didn't sign up for craziness either and, and neither did I. And, you know, I work all day, just like a lot of people in the room. And then they come here till you know, Lord knows when, I mean.
So dear committee, we have two choices. We can meet more often or we will be having the longer meetings till we can get out of twenty twenty-one, which we have accomplished pretty much tonight.
Or we can leave to withdraw everything and just hold it down.
Through the worst of it. Um, but I have been requested to, on some occasions, not to have so many meetings. So we have, if we're gonna have fewer meetings, they're longer meetings. So we will.
We'll get, we'll get to. Four hours.
Pardon? So let's.
Off the table.
Move forward with this.
We did. We're in the public hearing and I'm, and I, we're in a public hearing. So you're getting an earful.
So.
At this public hearing of process.
To be able to do, as one of the people who's requested fewer meetings, is to hear from the applicant. Are you talking to me, Madam Chair?
River Grove.
No.
River Grove. Oh, we're talking to River Grove. You got the floor, River Grove.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair. Appreciate it. My name is Sean Coleman. I'm here with my partner Nick Gomes. Together, we are the owners of River Grove LLC. And I'm also here with Jim Harwood, who's our architect on this project. If I could share my screen, I don't know if I've got the permission to do that. I have a PowerPoint. It's brief, I promise. I know it's late.
You, you should be able to. And thank you for your patience and I am sorry for the late hour, but um.
Believe it or not, I'm a glutton for punishment. There's a lot of marijuana talk tonight. I'm a cannabis attorney, so I like to hear all of this stuff. So it was long but informative and interesting.
Okay, great.
How can I share my, is, am I ready to share?
Jeffrey, have you let him share?
Yeah, you should have that capability. It should be, it should be a share screen on the bottom there.
All right, we're launching. Can, can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. So as I said, we're River Grove LLC. We're seeking a cultivation, manufacturing and delivery license. Uh, special permit at four seventy-five Canal Street. Our team is just myself and Nicholas Gomes. We are a social equity company, just like the company you heard from before. And Nicholas Gomes is our social equity candidate. That means that he has a majority ownership in the company. And we're also here this evening with Jim Harwood, who's the architect that did all of our drawings and designed for the building. Let's see. So this is a picture of what the building looks like currently. And this is four seventy-five Canal Street. You'll see a bird's eye view of this building later, but along the left-hand side, if you can see my cursor, this is where all of the parking is for the building. Um, we have twenty-seven parking spaces. I think we had originally indicated forty-four. So that is one change. Looks to be some text missing here, but the proposed facility rendering you can see here is what Jim provided. This is a rendering of what the building would look like once we put all of our mechanical engineering. Um, and we're looking to hire about ten to twenty employees. Our manufacturing facility would operate from about nine to six and as well as our delivery company. Right now, currently, we're thirty-one and forty-two in the CCC queue. That's for cultivation and manufacturing. Our delivery uh application received a request for more information. So that's not in the queue. We expect to be approved, you know, if we're very lucky, April, but probably more like May at this point.
Okay.
And our next slide should be the overview of the building. So I've only provided for this presentation the first floor drawings because the level of detail generally crashes my computer and I don't wanna slow things down, but I wanted you all to see uh the floor plan and an overview of the, kind of the most important floor where the most is going on. And it also shows the access to the building and multiple entrances. So I chose to just show you this floor. I hope you have before you the complete set of drawings for the entire site plan and the other floors of the building. There are five floors.
Behind me with everything.
So if you can see my cursor, this is the secure access where the vestibule is and then the secure location where people get screened when they come in, including employees and visitors. And then there's a secure Sally Port um just next to that. And then down here in the bottom left-hand corner is another secure Sally Port with the loading and unloading of delivery uh vehicles. Those are the only two entry points and the only way a person could enter or leave is through this door here. The uh entry point here is only for cars. There is a door that's located on the street side, but we don't plan on using that for access and we'll just lock it and secure it. Um, you can see this back hallway here where my cursor is. It would be the north side of the building. Um, this is the alleyway that connects the manufacturing and packaging and shipping area to the delivery operation. So if I drew a line with this kind of dotted line, I don't know if you can see it, this back corner, that is the self-contained delivery operation. So it's storage, very similar to what Green Grab was just describing. You have an application, you receive an order and it comes out of this back garage area. This is where the product would be stored. This is where um kind of the back office operations for the delivery side of things would take place. The rest of these rooms you'll see are all the grow rooms and vegetation rooms, as well as reservoir rooms and office space. Our total canopy footprint is sixty-nine thousand four hundred and seventy-six feet. So that's a tier eight license. And the total building is a hundred and sixteen thousand square feet. The way we've drawn it up now, we're occupying about eighty-nine thousand square feet of that one hundred and sixteen square feet. Security is obviously important. We've taken a lot of proactive measures with our design to make sure the building is safe and secure, including twenty-four hour um security measures, closed circuit television, access control and monitoring, security alarm systems, of course, and then redundant systems in the event of a power outage or some tampering or uh a fault. It won't shut down the entire system. We also wanna implement a video intercom system because it is a very big facility. We wanna be able to track where people are and deliver messages so that if they're on the fourth floor and there's a security issue, we can reach them if we're down there on the first floor monitoring things. Um, waste and training and access are also important parts of the security plan. So all waste materials has to be disposed of, stored and monitored in accordance with the state regulations. It has to be rendered safe and then uh disposed of through a, a third-party company. We also plan on training all of our employees how to report safety measures. We've uh included upon request our safety and security protocols that we submitted to the CCC, which includes reporting of certain um security issues and systems and processes that everyone has to go through with checklist to make sure that there's uh proper training in place. uh, proper training in place. And then of course, security always kind of begins and ends with access. Nobody can get onto the property without a key card. And then when anyone does access the property with that key card, we know who it was and at what time. Uh, that's what I spoke about earlier. This is a bird's eye view. So if you can see my cursor, kind of where the shadow is, that's the secure Sally port loading area for the truck. And just to the left of that is the secure vestibule and entry point for employees. And then this back corner is the delivery operation and that Sally port there. And then along the side here, the mechanicals that you saw in the rendering, as well as the parking area here. Odor, as everybody knows by now, is a hot topic. We tried to be very proactive and, um, you know, kind of bring out all the stops when it comes to our odor control plan so that we could get out in front of any issues and then be a responsible partner in the Holyoke community. In, in our estimation, odor control kind of begins with containing any sort of escaping of air from the building and that is accomplished by vestibules. So having limited entry points and access points means that the air can basically be kind of trapped. A vestibule is a good way of securing the common areas and creating a buffer in the interior of the building so that there's very little gas and air that can escape that, that we don't want to. Uh, we've also designed in our particular implementation of this, split type air handling units so that all of the ductwork is pressurized. Our HVAC and ventilation system also has another layer of protection through carbon filtration. Um, and that way the carbon filters basically absorb the odor as it passes through there. We have another line of defense, um, after that, which is UV purification that is more geared towards killing off any bacteria or fungus or VOCs that might be still in the air after they make it through all these other measures. But it can also be a good preventer of odor. And then kind of a last line of defense, you know, we have active carbon and fan filter systems in all the actual grow rooms. And I'll show you a picture of a rendering of what one of our grow rooms might look like. And the goal here, while we don't have in the industry today, there's a lot of debate about an objective measure of odor. In our estimation, we want someone to be able to stand on the street or have someone drive by and, and not even know that there's a cannabis facility here. This is what it looks like now. There's a current business in there. Um, I don't know if anyone's familiar with the business, the landowner, Joe Fagan. Um, he runs a, a company that uses giant presses to create various different laminate materials and vinyl materials and things like that. This is what the building looks like currently. This is what a grow room would look like in there, a self-contained um, with its own HVAC, its own lighting, its own fans. And then of course, uh, security measures, but then the, the lone door that will help it contain any smell. And then any smell that does escape gets captured through these vents here. Uh, manufacturing, anytime you're doing some relatively serious manufacturing, it can be dangerous. And so we're taking extra precaution when it comes to the design of our kind of modular self-contained, you know, blast proof rooms. The idea is that if something does break out or spill, or there's a fire, or there's a spark that any sort of um, idea that this might expand to other parts of the building or encapsulate an entire floor or harm people around it is, the idea is to contain it. And that's what our whole goal is here. And we'll adhere to the state and national requirements for C one, D one. And then of course, the CCC reviews all of our extraction, including pressure testing and ventilation and all of the protocols and uh, machinery that we buy for the extraction. We do plan on using ethanol and other gases, not CO2. And um, in the beginning, we plan on using solventless extraction through an industrial kitchen. It's basically like having a big crock pot and a giant oven and you, you bake it. That's a kind of a simplified way of thinking of it. And that doesn't involve any solvent and it's much safer. Part and parcel with the security um, of the building is obviously diversion. So we don't want anyone to have product come in or go out that shouldn't be there. Um, the system that we have to use by the state is metric. It's a seed to sale tracking system. The unique key cards and badges mean that only certain people will be to access the room where the product actually is. And then anybody that does access that room will be on a list and will know when and who was in that room. And that way, if something does go missing, we know exactly where to go. Um, we have developed standard operating procedures for inventory, labeling, order processing and transportation. And we have to enforce those, have strict adherence to the standard operating procedures. And we hope that there will be no instances of diversion. And that includes any of our potential waste products that might seek, someone might seek to repurpose. Um, that is included in our diversion plan. At the heart of our diversion plan is um, a training mechanism through all of our employees, not just to teach them the proper methods of how to handle these items, but if somebody did get the bright idea of trying to do something like this, it would basically be senseless because the way that we're tracking it is so intricate, you'd be caught pretty quickly. That's our, that's our goal with the training. Did I hear that there was a question? I don't know if I heard that or dog.
Just going back to um, a previous slide. So did I understand that you will not have CO2 on the site?
No, we don't plan on using CO2.
Okay.
At this stage. If we did, we would have to come back and undergo a whole nother series of machines and reviews and things like that. But at this time, no.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And that's it. So that's the end of our presentation. We did receive a letter um, from the planning board, a review letter. I hope everyone received our response. In our opinion, we think we hit every single response. Um, and that, you know, our application would essentially be deemed complete at this point. But I wanted to open it up to the committee and answer any further questions that you might have.
Okay, so we have your application. We have a March eight letter from planning. Um, and we have a March eleven letter from you. So if you could, um, it looked like there weren't too many open issues in their letter on the eighth.
No, I, I don't have other letters to compare it to, but by my own opinion, I would say it was, there weren't too many things. One of them was the photometric study. Uh, we did provide a photometric study. We tried to put some some red arrows. I don't, I don't know. Do you guys, um, may I ask if you have that in front of you?
We do.
The March, okay, great. So you see the red arrows?
Plan.
We hope that that's responsive. Tr- trash and waste disposal, we made that upon request. A lot of this is governed by the CCC architectural review and it's very lengthy. And so we didn't include all of them. But uh, that was requested and we did provide that. And we also indicated through an exhibit where we plan to have secured and unsecured trash because that's part of the waste disposal plan. So we hope that that's responsive. Um, the traffic impact statement was questioning specifically uh, with regards to employee entrances. And the red arrow indicates that there is just that one employee entrance. It's uh, you know, by design, we want to funnel all traffic to a single point. So we only have to monitor one kind of coming and going. That excludes trucks. Trucks can obviously drive in and out of Sally port, but employees and visitors and limited guests would only go through that one door. And uh, yes.
So if your parking is reduced from twenty four to twenty, forty four to twenty seven, is that going to be adequate to meet the regs and the percentages required for the number of employees you anticipate to have? Is that?
Yes, we believe so. So in the beginning stages of the company, there obviously less people working there. The idea is not to um, build out the entire facility at once. We do want to maximize the canopy, but it's important to get going and get some cash flow by focusing on a small portion of our larger canopy and then using the manufacturing and, and maybe delivery, but the real focus is cultivation and manufacturing to get the facility up and running. Uh, before we go, before we go expand, our, our maximum, if we were to run this completely, we would estimate there's about twenty people working there, not including the delivery drivers. Which we estimate to be four, but they would be likely on the road most of the time. So not parking.
Okay.
Madam Chair. Yeah. So um, my question has to do with the traffic study. Um, and I know you said that what they asked you with the planning board was mostly around parking, but with uh, GTI and a variety of other marijuana industries in that same exact location and that being Canal Street being a very uh, used street for trucks and a lot of different people going in and out from South Hadley to Chicopee across different borders. Um, did any, I mean, I guess, is there a way that we could try to find out how much you guys would impact the traffic along?
How many?
Right, like how many? Well, I mean, they said two delivery vehicles, they'll be in and out, but with their delivery vehicles and then with people coming in and out to purchase along with the delivery vehicles and the trucks coming in on a GTI, plus the host, that whole little area, there's going to be a significant amount of traffic increased.
Well, it's not a retail, so that will drastically reduce the amount of foot traffic and vehicular traffic in the space. We estimate that there will be only about four trips a day. And we did include kind of a detailed breakdown in the traffic impact portion of the narrative for the special permit and referenced kind of the national standard guidelines when it comes to manufacturing cultivation facilities. And we estimate there'll be one to three deliveries a week um, that are not um, sizable big trucks, just kind of supplies and packaging and uh, maybe some uh, material that we can turn into plants or something like that. And then there'll be one to two tractor trailer deliveries per quarter. So we only expect to have a large, you know, where there might be some backing up and pulling out and have a large truck in there, that Sally port, one to two times a quarter. So outside of the employees coming and going, four trips a day from a visitor or a vendor, um, someone might come to sample the product and we can give them a few a, a limited amount for them to try. That would be comprised of those kinds of trips. And then the one to three a week for other smaller deliveries and a one to two a quarter. So uh, it's not like a retail. We don't expect there to be a significant impact on the traffic that's already coming and going from the facility.
So for me, in reference with regards to, I understand that it's not a retail. It's just that there is a lot of different entities within that same area and there are more coming. So like, it's not, your, your, your national standards that you use it by was by your marijuana industry. And that, that doesn't take into account five or six other marijuana industries that are in the same area and the same location that would probably be increasing the same amount of traffic for each one. Um, I, I get to, to, to an extent, um, where, what you're explaining and elaborating, but I kind of grew up in that neighborhood and I know for a fact that if there's a truck backing up in there and then the train is coming and that the things are down, you're creating, this is gonna be I mean, it's, it's probably not gonna happen a lot, but there's gonna be havoc when, when, when the train comes, the things go down. And if there's people trying to move back and forth, I just wanted to see if someone was taking that into consideration, but.
Yeah, we certainly don't want to negatively impact the traffic situation. I will say that if there's that many vehicles coming and going, then something's going right. That's, that sounds like a lot of industry. It's designed to, or at least our goal is to have this be lucrative, which means there'll be a lot of traffic. Trucks, people coming and going. And if the industry blossoms, then yes, there, there will be more people coming and going, but I'd rather have, in my opinion, unless people see differently, I'd rather have more trucks and more people than it be dead or they have, it's totally empty. You could drive all day with no industry. So there's a trade off, you know.
To go home.
So, um, in the interest of time, we have another public hearing and it does look like this application is very complete, but I think in fairness to the committee and the hour, people need time to look everything over because you have a multi-faceted application here. Um, so I do think we're gonna need to continue this. But everything's pretty much before us. So, um, all right. So I'm thinking, you know, our April agenda is already done because we got it with everyone and it's going to April. So, um, you know.
I would defer.
Unless you folks think you're ready to deal with it.
I would defer to you, Madam Chair.
Information to take in and act on right now. I think we should look at, at it.
I would motion to continue then.
You know.
Second.
Okay, so um, the motion is to continue the public hearing to April twenty sixth at six thirty. So we're gonna have a lot of public hearings again, but the good news is we'll have gone through all the content. So there'll just be remaining questions. All right? All in favor?
Aye.
So thank you. And um, we will hopefully be able to move forward on the twenty sixth on this. Okay?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to the committee and we'll see you in April.
Okay, thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
Okay, motion to take up item.
Motion to take up item eleven.
Second. Do we, in fairness to, uh, oh, well, actually she's on the committee with me. I was gonna say, um.
All in favor?
Just to spend the rules to do thirteen, but.
Hi.
Oh, is she, is she here?
Um, God, I hope the person that's requesting isn't here.
Who, Kukain? Kukain?
Okay, so.
Kane's here.
Yeah, so.
She's on the committee with me, so.
Right, so, so the motion has been made to open the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Item eleven is a special permit application of W T M S B LLC at one twenty Middle Water Street to operate a marijuana cultivation and manufacturing establishment. Welcome. Sorry for the late hour. Thank you for your patience. If you want to run through your application, um, we will probably need to continue this just by way of practicality. So what is your pleasure?
Oh, we'd like to, we'd like to proceed, Madam Chair. Uh, I know it's been a long night. I appreciate the committee stamina. Uh, I'm tired myself, uh, but would like to make our presentation. This is our first meeting on this special permit or application with the ordinance committee. Um, so may I introduce myself and uh, proceed? We'll move very quickly.
First at another meeting now. I mean, honestly, God, I mean.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Jim Valeriani with the Mentoring Group, principal officers at one hundred State Street in Boston, oh two one oh nine. With me is Terry Reynolds. He's put together uh, the site plan, uh, and he is familiar with the architectural plans, which we can uh, uh, show to you. Um, earlier this evening, we received the planning board site plan approval, which we were uh, very uh, glad to receive. Um, we've received the police department's review memo, which is in the packet we submitted. We've received the uh, DPW memo that was sent to your uh, committee in January. We have a host community agreement with the city and we have our provisional license, which after our local permitting and our architectural review will allow us to go into construction. Now, this is a fantastic site. It's a two acre property, um, located between the Connecticut River, uh, the Cabbage Street Bridge and the third level or South Canal, as it may be known. And with additional mill buildings to the uh, south, one or two of which are expected to be marijuana uh, facilities as well. So there is a single story warehouse building, twenty eight thousand square feet, which will involve phases one and two of our cultivation and manufacturing uh, process. We also have an addition that we are proposing that was approved by the planning board early this evening. Uh, that would allow for a two-story, uh, thirty six thousand square foot uh, cultivation and product manufacturing building, uh, eighteen thousand square feet per floor. Uh, this is the highest and best use for this property. We have a large uh, open area that is just currently uh, covered with dirt. Uh, the site is uh, completely underutilized. And uh, the company looks forward to utilizing the warehouse building in phases one and two. And uh, in about two thousand and twenty five, we have a, a three-phase project. Uh, phases one and two inside the existing warehouse building. And then uh, into approximately two thousand and twenty five, uh, the expectation is we will develop that second story. Uh, that, that, that addition with two stories um, to fulfill uh, the, the expectations of the company and what we've had approved by the planning board. So I, I, I do anticipate that you'll continue this hearing. Uh, if we had more time, I, I think we could have presented a more thorough overview, overview with more detail, uh, especially given approvals from uh, planning and all the inter, uh, interdepartmental reviews. Uh, but I know it's been a long night, but what I'd like to do, and I think it's important to do, is have uh, Terry Reynolds uh, show us our site plan and uh, show our elevations on the architected rolls. Uh, we'll meet all requiring, requirements of the cannabis commission. We have a secure Sally port uh, for a storage of marijuana waste. There'll be uh, completed here instead of cannabis regulations. We have plenty of parking. We have more parking than we need. Uh, and we have various uh, outline paths for a propane generator, transformer, uh, things along that sort. Uh, it's very well designed by Reynolds Engineering. So uh, Terry, why don't you, uh, i- i- if I can ask, take over with the site plan, please?
Sure. Hi, I'm Terry Reynolds, uh, T Reynolds Engineering. And uh, if I can show, I'll put up a site plan, go, go over it with you. So as Jim explained, um, what's currently there is a twenty eight thousand square foot, one, one-story warehouse building right here on the site. is a 28,000 square foot, one, one-story warehouse building right here on the site. Gravel in front here. A loading dock, an internal loading dock area down in this area. It's depressed. And then offices and main entrance right here. So currently, Cabbage Street is over here with the bridge over the, over the river there. And then this is Middlewater Street, which is a private way with several easements in it. There's an easement for the railroad and then there's an easement for abutting uses through here. And then there's also shared easements here and here along with utility easements coming back to the flood wall and railroad back in this area. So as Jim explained, this is a three-phase project that's being proposed. So there are in the, in the existing building, which is right here, there will be the first two phases in year one and two. So the back portion of this building will be developed with gross space processing, an internal Sallyport in, in this internal loading dock area. And then a fertigation area right here. Then with mechanical equipment. Initially, here and here, dumpster location in here. The site is currently fenced and the fencing will get modified slightly as the development proceeds. But currently there's a fence that has been installed that goes all the way around the site and encloses the entire site for security purposes. As the site is developed, that fence will, will be enhanced with cantilever gate here for, to access into the delivery and, and you, and utility area in here. There will be a pedestrian gate here. And then there will be two cantilever gates here for employee parking in this area. Out here will be also handicap slash employee parking if there are handicapped employees plus visitor and vendor parking in addition. All access to the site will be done with key cards, both remote and push button at all entrances. Employees will likely have remote garage door type key cards that will allow them to get in and out. All entry and exit will be monitored through a central security area in the office space. So as part of this development, we are proposing several improvements. Initially, in phase one will be just improvements in the front, just this area and the mechanical equipment down in this area. Phase two will probably be no other additional site improvements, but phase three will be the development of these parking areas, four parking areas here and here along with extensive landscaping all around the building. And road and then creation of a pedestrian sidewalk that will allow access not only this site, but all the other remaining sites down the road. This, this area is a little bit contentious. The abutting property owners at Alaska Assets are saying they don't want it. So we're actually negotiating with them. We feel that it is an important and good use of this area. It is currently not utilized. It has landscape islands. It has utility poles in it. So we are hoping that they will work with us to allow that to happen. Otherwise, we may end up having to amend our plan and pull, pull this portion of the out because it is in running play. So additionally, we have received a stormwater permit for this site. So there's an exist, you know, fairly extensive stormwater system designed for this that will actually reduce the runoff to the entire site from both the development of, of the building. So there's a 25% reduction in runoff there. So the, the process here will be using CO2 for their vegetation rooms, transformers located out in front, the generator here. And then a dumpster that is enclosed, secure here. All marijuana waste will be managed inside the building. It'll be ground and made inert. After it's made inert, then it can be brought out to an outside dumpster and disposed of by a trash disposal company. Lighting has been designed so that it provides adequate lighting with dark sky compliant lights. All the lighting is designed so that there's no spillover. There won't be upward glare or anything like that. And that is included in a photometric that is, is part of your package and I here. So fairly simple lighting. Two larger parking lot lights and a smaller parking lot light here. As you can see, zero lighting spilling over onto abutting properties and off, off the property. There will be some stoop lighting at the entrances and in the, in these management areas. So that's mostly it for the site. We did perform a traffic study for it that looked at both the site and the intersection out here on the Cabbage Street and extending down to the lights at Canal. The, there are traffic consultant determined that, that while there is a slight increase that will be, you know, generated, that we will not change service levels of the adjacent roadways and result in any significant impacts to the traffic system. As far as security, as Jim said, we have a security plan that's been approved by the police department. There is an extensive security plan that's been submitted to CCC. And as this goes through architectural review, then it all reviewed again through the state. Over and switch things and I'll show you our building layout.
Oh, my God. Now, this will be quick, Counselor Jordan, it's just four elevations.
I mean, I just, I just feel like we can pick this up at the next time. I, I mean, I want you to have a full airing, but again, I object to public hearings being held at 11 o'clock at night. This is supposed to be also for the benefit of citizens. This is not your fault, by the way. You're, you just happen to be last on the list. It's just, you know, this is, this is ridiculous. We should not be this. And it also, I also object because the average person apparently is going to have to watch this in a video recording because people shouldn't be expected to have to stay up this late to watch your presentation. It's not your fault. It's the committee's fault. So I apologize.
No, it's, it's nobody's fault. This is the way of the world in your busy city and a busy committee. I would suggest that I would relay that we do not anticipate any abutter opposition. It's a highly industrial area. If, if, if I may, if Terry can just quickly show those elevations and perhaps we can just show a couple of quick aerial views of the property. If we could find out of any major concerns of the committee tonight, we'd appreciate that.
I had questions. I mean, I, maybe I'll talk to you at midnight. I don't know how long this is going to go, but I, I did have, we did receive some letters from various departments relative to your application. Have you filed formal responses to these? I'm referencing from the city engineer. I'm also referencing the planning board had made a number of statements relative to your application. I don't see response statement from you on these.
Yeah, the, we do have a response statement. We did get the planning board site plan approval, so I think that sort of makes moot their comments in February.
Do we have a copy of those?
No, in fact, that site plan review came this, came this evening. We just don't have the decision, but it was voted and proved unanimously.
We, we have, we have response comments from all departments. All, all comments have been responded to and accepted in general. For the planning board comments, some were left open for discussion during the meeting and those were addressed. So at this point, there are no unanswered comments, none that are, are not responded to satisfactory.
Right, so, so we'll be able to receive those and then deal with those at the next hearing.
Yeah, and if we could get written responses, attorney, Jim, that would be appreciated too, because I just want to make sure that there's something in writing specifically addressing your formal response to these. I'm referencing specifically the January 24th engineer's letter and the February 8th planning board letters. If you can respond to those and then we'll get these supplemental documents, I'm sure, at the next hearing.
Tell you what, it's a long night, Counselor Jordan. We have done that. We will redo it. Make sure you have everything you need. Yeah, I will be honest. I didn't mean to be presumptuous, but we thought we might be able, if we went first this evening, I think we would have got your approval. It's a great project. But I understand the need. It's late. Let's, we, we agree to the continuance. Are you meeting any earlier than April 26, though? Is that the next meeting date, Madam Chair?
Yeah, that's what everybody's being continued to, so you're not being singled out.
Okay, no, didn't feel that way at all. No due process violations this evening.
No, 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 I, I know you didn't. I didn't, I know you didn't, but maybe we can take you up sooner since you were so late this time.
That would be greatly appreciated. We've been since 5 o'clock this afternoon.
We sat through planning first and now we're over at ordinance, so hey, have a great night, everybody. Get a good night's sleep. We appreciate your time.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you continue the public hearing until April 26?
Second.
30 for number 11.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Motion to take up item 12 off the table and open up the public hearing?
Yes, and all in favor? Aye, and you can make a motion to continue it to?
Motion to continue the public hearing until May 26.
May 24.
May 24. 24 at 6:30 PM.
Yeah.
Okay, motion. Seconding Counselor Maldonado Velez's motion.
May 24, correct.
24?
6:30 PM.
Yes, is there a second? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
So well, that's continued. Okay. And item 13, motion to take it up?
Motion to take up item 13 off the table?
All in favor? Aye. That a handicap sign be placed in front of 56 Linden Street for Hetty S. Juan?
John Do.
John Do.
John Do. Placard number PL4980420. Disabilities went out. They're recommending approval.
I make a motion that it be approved.
I second.
All in favor? Aye. 5-0, that is recommended for approval to the council.
Motion to adjourn?
Second? All in favor? Aye.
All right, have a good night, everybody.
Thank you so much. Good night and.